I wish every father would thank you for this beautiful Lord's day, we thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed on us down here. The Lord has to just leave us tonight in His being and everything we do to be pleasing and out of Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Got off the little call. Curtis is here, Amy is here, Ms. Sue is here, Paula is here, Curtis is here, I am here. Mr. Denny is here, Ms. Sherry is here, and Mr. Mr. Warren is here. And Dennis is here. We've got the full house, everyone is counting for. That being said, I will need to take a motion to approve the agenda when you have successful attention.
I make more than ever.
As I.
The proper very good second, if they approve the agenda, all those in favor, say the opposite sign night.
Aye.
Those saying, motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes for September fifth town council meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from September fifth, two thousand twenty-three town council meeting.
Aye.
We have a second, all those in favor, say the opposite sign night.
Aye.
Those saying, motion carries. And next up is the minutes for September sixth, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand three, two thousand two hundred and thirty. The public hearing is closed.
I'm welcome.
Our motion that we approve the minutes from September sixth, chairman of the public hearing.
Second.
The proper moving second again, all those in favor, say the opposite sign night.
Aye.
Those saying, motion carries. And next up is the minutes for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, public hearing to adopt an annual fire assessment.
Number four of the minutes for September eleventh, public hearing to adopt fire assessment, four minutes.
Aye.
The proper moving second, again, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, public hearing to adopt an annual fire assessment, all those in favor, say the opposite sign night.
Aye.
Those saying, motion carries. Public participation, if you wish to pick, excuse me, pick not, if you fill out a form. Ms. Wendy, raise your podium, speak clearly and state your full name and address for the record, and your promise to be limited to a maximum of three minutes, please. All right, information logs. September the nineteenth is National Voting Registration Day, which is Tuesday, the nineteenth, that will be at.
You supervise my lectures.
Two hundred lectures off the script.
Yes.
Okay. And then, then you have to stand outside.
Will you hear the early movement?
We go to seven.
Right. The walk assess award of the Westport Walk Report meeting is Wednesday, September the twentieth. That's just from Wednesday at one P M. and over three, two P M. everyone here on this board, if you have been advertised, so you are legally able to go there, so welcome. Brentford is a mighty food bank, Mobile Food Drive is Friday, the twenty-second, at nine thirty, that is at the James Scott Park. Homecoming Parade is Thursday, October the fifth, at five P M. Is that, that's gonna be at the same location, I'm assuming that's it. All right, and.
There is in your packet, I just revised it, there's a two thousand twenty-three parade entry form that I put in there. If you guys wanted to fill that out for, I guess, each of the gators that we're doing, the two gators that we're doing, and the theme is Wild and Wild West.
Okay, Levee County Affordable Housing Board Shop is Thursday, October the twelfth, that will be in the courthouse.
Bill, first Baptist church, first church. And there's some glaring exceptions as well.
Okay. And the next Viewified Bronson Day, the fifth, is Saturday, October the twenty-eighth, at ten A M. How are you doing?
Yeah, we have a lot of shots, isn't it? Huh? We have to order just pizza.
I want to be with this, that's my birthday. Is there anything else going on that weekend, anybody know so?
So.
Your birthday.
So I'm a.
I anniversary.
So, Bridgette has not announced when he's gonna be doing the breast cancer walk, but he usually is around this time. So, and usually he's announced it by now, I don't know if anybody else has talked to him about it. But he usually does it every year, he walks from down there to up here, and then they have a little celebration in the park. So that is the only thing that I can think of that might be at the same time, other than, you know, like, the song part, so.
Okay.
All right, next up is the Truck or Treat, which is Tuesday, October the thirty-first, it will be on Halloween, starts at six thirty. Do you need any discussion anymore?
Yeah, there is a session, so, two, there's two pieces of information in your pack, so first is the application, it's due on the seventeenth of October, second is the year of the promise agreement. The reason I wanted to put discussion next to it is because I got a call from one of the churches, I can't remember who it was, you guys remember?
Probably Mr. Sucker.
Thank you, who called last week to say that they would prefer us to not have it on Halloween. Apparently they don't like to hold it on the actual holiday, so they were like, is there anybody who can have it the other day, could you have it on Saturday? So I just, I mean, this is what I've already put out there, but if you guys want to change it, we could, I just wanted to put it out there for discussion.
Have you already, is it your time?
What was that?
I just, I mean, he was saying that basically the churches are not gonna wanna participate if people do on the third of August. No. Have you heard from any of the other churches, he's the only one I've heard from, not so far.
Right, yeah, so what?
But, I mean, that's why I put discussion, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever, it's just, you know, you already been talking about doing this on this day for, um, a long, six weeks now, so I didn't know how you thought about changing that.
To events on Saturday, maybe, too much.
Yeah, and I was actually for it on Halloween, only because, literally, the Saturday before that is usually when Bridgette does the, the breast walk. So, and I did not, you know, we personally, we don't wanna interfere with that.
Right.
So, Halloween being on Tuesday was kinda, was okay with me. But.
I mean, we've already said that.
Yeah, I feel like we've already paid money to make signs, I feel like we're kinda stuck with this.
Okay.
And we can tell them, hey, you know, maybe we can get together next year.
Okay.
We did not, I've never known that, that they did not wanna participate on the actual day.
That's what they said, you know, they've been on the day.
That's what I thought, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, Unified Bronson's easier to move, I just made, literally, I made that up just last week, so that's easier to move, but, like I said, we've already been advertising this for several weeks now, so.
Can we send out an email saying that, you know, from here on out, we need to get this discussed?
Yeah.
To make a good move of, remember to do it that day.
Yeah. But you wanna keep it on the thirty-first for this?
Yes, I think having it on Halloween is good.
Okay, uh. So do we need to make a motion on that, or do we?
No.
Uh, next town council meeting will be Monday, November the sixth. And we have a thank you letter for the Levee County Development Department, see you soon.
Sure. The Levee County Building and Development Department would like to thank you for the speedy cleanup of the downed tree from the storm, it's nice to see the camaraderie between the town and the county, it is always appreciated, respectfully, during this ceremony, administrative support supervisor, license and physical and permitting and development department.
We were definitely to the last, but, um, what I've seen is some of the stuff on the damage I've seen on the coast, pretty scary, so. All right, next up, Sue, I'll turn to you.
All right, so first on my agenda tonight is to discuss the audit results from Thomas Gray, and for whom are you guys?
Well, good evening, may our council members that are here present, there's also the two thousand twenty-two audit, and rather than go through the boundary report in a separate letter, I had just made everything into a set of slides, we'll open the slides, some of them, so we can be in here. So before that, I'll introduce myself, I'm Barbara Boyd, I'm a partner with Purvis Brewing Company, Jeremiah Brown is the supervisor and director, and Jeremiah's been doing the audit for five years. All right, we'll get into it, the auditor's report, first page, this is, in the boundary report, we have in front of the book the look, there's one letter, and in the back of the book, there's two or four other letters, so this is summary of all the reports we've done. The auditor's opinion on the financial statement, and this, that's the most important report, that's in there, it tells you that you receive an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and has level of assurance that these auditors can provide. And it basically tells you that you can rely on the numbers that are included in the financial statement. As part of the audit, we need to look at your internal controls, we use it for our risk assessment, in order to allocate our resources, so anything that's higher risk, we spend more time testing, if it's low risk, we spend less time testing. And as part of that process, government audit standards require us, requires us to report to you if there are any control deficiencies that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So we did have a few, we had three material weaknesses, a significant deficiency that we're talking about, in that slide, and then we also look at compliance with major contracts, grants, state laws, rules and regulations, anything that could impact the financial statement from now. So we do have a couple of non-compliance topics that we have to talk about over the course of. The auditor general requires us to issue an examination report on compliance with Florida statute two eighteen four thirteen, which is a local one that has a new statute, no issues there, you are in compliance with that statute. And then finally, we issue a management letter, and according to the auditor general, in that letter, there's several items of information that there is, that has been in, to summarize a few here, one is they wanna know whether any of the findings are renewed findings, and whether they've been repeated in the previous two years. If a finding has been repeated for three years, they send it to J L X, which is state, and the state will require a response, renewed as to what the action for our action plan is for the finding. And then we do have one recommendation for improvement in that management letter, so we include in there anything that doesn't rise to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness, that we consider important enough to communicate with you. So, on the next page is the summary of findings. Item twenty-two dash one, segregation of duties, this is a recent finding, and it's because of the town's limited staffing, without a lack of segregation, they can have their duties, so you've got one person collecting cash or receipts, and also reporting those receipts in your financial, in your financial reporting system. So, that just creates an opportunity for fraud, if you don't have any gaming controls in place, and that's a material weakness. Item twenty-two two, utility billings errors and adjustment, this again is a material weakness, this is a recent finding, the billing errors are still occurring and not being caught before those bills are sent to customers. Once they do, once they're identified, either by the town or by the customer, they do get adjusted, but you've got about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of adjustments occurring here for those utility bills. And then on top of that, you've got the employee, the employees that authorize the adjustments also have the ability to post cash receipts and collect cash, which again creates an opportunity for fraud, and so it just, you can have, having so many adjustments really makes any detection control move at this point, because you have so many that it's hard to tell which one might be legitimate, which one might not be, so really, if you can limit the number of adjustments before those go through, it'll help. Item twenty-two three, the financial closing reporting, so the first two are, are repeats, the next two items were just repeated in the previous year, so the financial closing reporting, third would be a material weakness. This is one of the reasons that we're here so late, typically, your audit is due June thirtieth, I would like to present it before then, but the audit was postponed for a few months, unless we received a trial balance, there were several errors, and then we started auditing, and additional designs, and so, we're just recommending that management review the financial closing reporting process, create a checklist, try to, try to create timely financial reports. One of the side, side consequences of that is that you're also not getting accurate financial information throughout the year, so really just want to have that financial closing reporting process happening, because if you're not there for, you're not making sure that the information is accurate. Twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash four, the utility rate increase, we talked about last year as well, this is the town council approved, the rate increase for utilities, March two thousand twenty-one, but not implemented until April two thousand twenty-two, so there's a little bit of revenue loss in the prior year, and then a little bit this year, we expect to make about seventy-six hundred dollars of revenue loss during fiscal year twenty-two, those rates have been, they're. Item twenty-two dash five, grant reporting, this is a new item, and this is a material non-compliance, and this is for the quarterly reports, for your state per grant, that have not been submitted timely. In the current year, this resulted in about seventy-seven thousand dollars of expenses that have not been reimbursed by the grant as of now, so it was twelve thousand for last year, and sixty-four thousand for this year, so it was about seventy-seven thousand. The revenue has not been accounted for in your financial statements because of the unknown whether that revenue is gonna be collected, it could be a grant. Item twenty-two dash six on debt covenants, your, your debt covenants require that your net operating revenues for your water sewer utility is sufficient to pay for the annual best service, this year, that was not sufficient, there was forty thousand dollars in water sewer net operating revenues, and seventy-one thousand dollars in your best service, so you're short on thirty thousand dollars. And then finally, inventory, which is the management letter recommendation, because we don't consider it to be material, that the town hasn't performed a year-end physical inventory count in a few years, so it's good habit to do so, really, just because you want accountability for the audit. All right, so the significant audit matters, these are communications that were in the governance letter, in the separate staple letter, and anything that's in that letter is really there to help you assess the results of the audit, as well as more qualitative aspects of the financial statements. So, on the first line, I mean, there are qualitative aspects of accounting practices, there were no new accounting policies, and no transactions noted, there's a lack of authoritative guidance in your financial statements, so no significant changes from last year to this year. The significant estimates that are always in your financial statements are your depreciation, accumulated depreciation, that's your estimated useful lives of your assets, as well as the allowance for ongoing accounts. And then there's a couple of net disclosures, that we consider to be a sensitive net disclosure, that's note five on long-term debt, and note six on the flesh revenues, flesh revenues, of course, you're gonna discuss the, the debt covenant. Difficulty encountered performing the audit, we talked about commencement, we had over the age, and significant additional statistics were required, completed, corrected, and corrected in the statements, there were few audit adjustments that were identified as part of the audit, some were material, corrected by management, some were not material, but above a trivial threshold, so they were accumulated to make sure that, in total, they were not aggregatory, material financial state, or financial statement error. Those are included in that evidence that are pages for audit statements. And then new accounting standards will be aware of the next year, you've got the government, or the P R and N asset, allow you to report it if you have any subscription-based IT services, so that's fairly long to require, going through all of your IT contracts, it's gonna be a time-sensitive, a time-intensive process, going through any subscription-based IT arrangements that you have, all those non-accounts, and seeing if any of them are long-term, or, over non-censorial, or longer term.
So are you talking about like Microsoft Office, like small things like these things?
Yeah, though if you're on C N, it, you know, they may not be material, but you've got to accumulate them all, assess whatever it is, style there, or the quarter. So, it might be a process where you start earlier, that one way or another. The next two slides are just some financial highlights, we won't spend too much time on this, and these numbers are about a year old at this point, but a couple of items, there's one column out. In the first column, in the two thousand twenty-two for the general fund, you're, the last number there, the net change in fund balance, with the debt set at forty-six thousand and sixty-seven, so the decrease in fund balance of forty-six thousand versus an increase last year of seventy-nine thousand. And that decrease, what I mentioned, partially drilled it by the fact that there was sixty-four thousand dollars of expenses there that had not, that were meant to be grant under, with no grant revenue reported to, which is offset with expenses. On the right side, the little table on the right, is where how you end in the year, so your total fund balance, six hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-one, those would be your carry forward funds available as of nine thirty twenty-two, the unassigned, four fifty-five two oh eight, is anything that is available for operating expenditures. And that makes up about forty-nine percent of your operating expenses, so, you know, about half a year for the service, for expenses, and that doesn't take into account if you, you know, hurricane the value of head, just when you're making significant repairs, or spending money on gadgets, that would eat into your resource pretty badly. And then the financial highlights, the utility fund, here, we're looking at the same change in net position number, is an increase of forty-three thousand dollars in that position. One thing to keep in mind, though, that that increase is only forty-three thousand, your non-operating revenues expenses are too many than thirty-nine thousand, so without your grants, you really would be at a loss, which is what that operating income number is telling you, you've got almost a two-hundred thousand dollar decrease in operating income. Um, yeah, but it's almost double what it was last year, that's because your revenue stayed fairly flat while your expenses, yeah, quite a bit. Looking at your net position, you've got about half a million dollars under strict of net position, where initially. That is all I have, and just, that's a good news channel. Have any answering questions?
Any questions?
Um, probably not. Do we have, um, do we have a year-end physical inventory out scheduled, and just finished it last month?
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've had a hard time doing it without the clerks, obviously, we need extra people to be able to free up our public workers to do it, so I know it's, I went back to Jeremiah, I was like, I finished it, and he was like, yeah, let's certainly put this on. I mean, it is what it is, to be honest, it is what it is, we didn't have the staff, so we did just finish it, but yes, it is obviously late for this, but it's all.
Okay. So, my question would be, I guess more for y'all than her, so how do we separate the duties so that the person can, there's no way to do that?
Not.
I mean, just for the collecting of the two.
Well, the issue is, is that you have Beth, you have me, and you have Sue, so Beth collects the money, does the work, does the paperwork, Sue checks the deposit, and then I enter it, but if one person is out, so if somebody takes it, you write back, so it really is, it's just a matter of having the staff to do it and not to do it.
I think she lacks an understanding of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we, we've had this, we've discussed my own, you guys.
People, and you, I think progress six years, yeah.
We've spent like that for like twenty-two years, yeah.
We just don't have that. This is, uh.
But it's like, it's an opportunity for fraud, it doesn't mean that it's. Right, right.
Somebody was good back when we didn't have that.
And we have gotten better, I mean, you gotta remember, back when we first started, it was just the utility clerk and Wendy, and then I took over the deposits to try to be another, kind of third person, I know that's still probably not, but you guys would like, but that's the best we got is free, so.
You can talk, and see, the three people, you can do it, and if somebody's out, we can talk.
What question, last you have, you know, these discrepancies, all these red flags on here, this was more of a last year. So, look like nothing is being changed, now, Mr. Mayor, you told me your hands were tied, I think you're getting loose with my knowledge.
Well, first of all, you have to understand the mechanics of what we're talking about, just like what Wendy just said, uh, we've come a long ways here, over the years, uh, but we do not have the staff to do some of the stuff that heads on, that you, to do, to accommodate what they would, they would prefer us have five or six clerks in there, maybe, and all of them watching each other, and somebody supervising over that, and stuff like, hey, if you did, we could do that, but I promise you, your taxes is going to be to kill us.
And, and if you go up there to a town hall and sit up there, let's just say on a Wednesday, you'll see that there is no time for anything extra on certain days, because we don't have, like, we only have a building inspector on Wednesday, so that consumes the majority of all of their time on Wednesday.
So, those things are, I mean, we do what we can, with what we can.
And that's the way I know describing, what I'm saying is, I know, because I do, do it sometime, I know the deputy, she's tied to headlock, and we have, y'all can't get no help?
Yes, we can, a lot of them, could be more, again, it takes money, we just don't have.
Well, this lady was like, saying that, so no, no, you shouldn't have that, you just do something correct.
No, she's saying it's an opportunity for fraud, so we have to be aware of that.
Well, she said that last year.
So this is, was she.
And she said, they said it the last two and two years, like the pizza.
Okay.
But their job is to tell them to tie the bud.
They have improved, because if I remember right, this number was a lot higher last year than a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. I wanna say it was like three times that.
And a lot of the issues that we found, like with the water and stuff like that, like we called them, and it's been addressed, and also the turnover of employee, it does not fail, and if it happens this year, I'm going to scream. Right at the beginning of the audit, an employee leaves, one or two employees, a new accounting firm, those things take, those are major things, training somebody and bringing somebody in, because that's what falls back on me, it's Sue, so.
So, I mean, I will just add that, right, my job is to inform you what the opportunities, what the risks are, and so that's what I'm doing, you've gotta make an assessment, does it make sense financially to spend the money, how, what's the risk, you assess, what's the dollar amount that you could lose potentially, versus how much would it cost that, a person, to address some of those risks, so, yeah, I'm, I'm informing you of what the risks are.
Just because we can't make any adjustments sometimes, does not mean that we don't wanna know, like, we, we wanna know when we're losing money, we wanna know.
I hope so, and all.
Okay, thank you so much.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you've had a long time, you've had a long time, I recall, we were here that next year.
You go here and hit next, I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You go here, I've been on this, I've been on here since, uh, eighty-five.
Okay.
Off and on, and it's been the exact same.
But, but simply, you, you had, you had no help?
To accomplish what David wants you to do, to accomplish, you can do the double the staff here at least.
Uh, he can't do it.
We just can't do it. Okay, you can't afford it.
You can't afford our, our money, you're only a little liar, you're not, you're just a liar.
That is true, and that's why we do, that's why, that's why we hired Sue, that's, you know, that's part of her job, now, that's, that was a big step.
I, I, I say this, I feel it, we didn't have this, it wasn't here. I, I, I say this, I feel it, we didn't have Mrs. Libby on the street. I mean, that was most important.
People that you trust.
And put people in place that they can do so. All right. Next.
Okay, next up on the agenda is resolution twenty three dash nineteen. Go ahead and all read it, it's been short. Resolution of the town council in the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida, adopting the levy of adware and taxes for Levy County for fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four. And providing an effective date. Whereas the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida, on September sixth, twenty twenty three, adopted fiscal year tentative knowledge rate following the public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero dot zero six five. And whereas the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero dot zero six five. And whereas those taxable values for operating purposes are not exempt from taxation within the county gets consolidated by the county property arreater to the town of Bronson. As fifty seven million four hundred forty thousand five hundred forty eight. Now therefore be resolved by the town council of town of Bronson, Levy County Florida. One, the fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four operating mileage is five point two zero eight zero mils. Which is greater than the gold fat rate of five point oh six four two mils by two point eight four percent. Number two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
About one two zero eight zero.
Five point two zero eight zero. And that puts the adware taxes to total at two hundred ninety nine thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Okay. And just to give you an example, if we were to be maximum, how much would it difference?
Three hundred and twenty nine thousand, we're giving this additional thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars, you could not favor one person. Because that person with their health insurance and everything else is blocking fifty, sixty thousand dollars. So that's what causes the block. All right, uh, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion except for resolution twenty three dash nineteen. Adopting the adware taxes at five point two zero eight zero.
I see.
Again, just before the move to second, all those in favor signify the same eye. Move, say, motion carries.
All right, next up is resolution two three dash two zero. Resolution of the town council in the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four and providing an effective date. Whereas the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five on the eighteenth of September. And whereas at said, at said meeting, the town council reviewed, approved and adopted appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four. In the amount of three million twelve thousand four hundred thirty three dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Bronson, Levy County Florida. At one, the fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four tentative budget is adopted. Number two, this resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty three dash twenty four. Adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty three twenty four. That's it.
Before we move to second, all those in favor signify the same eye.
All right, last of my agenda is the items for the surplus auction. So I asked both Dennis and Curtis to come up with a list of things that they would be willing to auction off. Number one, to get rid of stuff that's old and been here for a long time. Of course, I just did it inventory, so now we know what's been here a long time. And number two, maybe make some money, not a lot of money, but. So the two lists are in front of you. Curtis's list is on top and then Dennis's follows. So the reason I really put this on the agenda is I just wanna know how you guys wanna do it. We talked to Mickey about it, I guess Mickey has held some of these in the past. Just trying to get, just put us to how you guys wanna do it. Would you prefer to do like a side relaunch in a bid, put numbers on it, what everybody can do? How do you know?
Most of the time.
You make your promises?
No. Sometimes though, the county, the county do it, the county usually got a lot more, they can get a company that will come in. Do it, they got enough stuff.
Yeah, we did for the state of control and.
Actually do a auction, maybe some lots and stuff.
We have done a, what we, with the county, with the neighbors, I think we need to hear some stuff like that every time we do.
Only that stolen stuff.
Yeah. That's done for a long time.
You don't have the government website, you can put stuff on it, they discern those stuff that you want, so.
Yeah.
These are hard, didn't you see the pay those people if he was out there?
Yeah, you don't remember, it's a percentage thing, which must have all, all.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we were thinking maybe we would just put item numbers on them, take pictures of them, advertise it.
It's not always enough, it's not always enough to get rid of my girl's car and stuff.
And if you do that, put your star in.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, put them in a bid, reserve or whatever. Not be the easiest way, I'm gonna occupy everybody's permission or try to call up the hotel or something like that.
So we just don't.
Right, we'll clear seal bid. We gotta go out, take pictures. Have little sheets. Try to get a rest of my, I'll get a.
We just need to make sure everything's all in the same place. Whatever you got.
All right.
So I got.
Please interrupt for one second. For doing that, for a statue or a reason, there should be a resolution. Which, which I'll draw, but you should make a motion authorizing this and, and authorizing me to draw up a resolution for, which I would in collaboration.
Resolution to get rid of surplus items?
Yeah, and to do it the way you described.
Make a motion that we authorize Mr. Warren to grant a resolution. To, for us to get rid of surplus items in a sealed bid auction.
I see.
All right, you have a motion, have a second, all those in favor, signify the same eye. Move, say, motion carries. All right, Curtis.
First thing on is the two thousand eight Ford truck. A party territory name, he gave me a price and ticket, we build the motor that's in there. Uh, we worked twenty five, twenty five thousand dollars to build it. The thing is, I want each employee to have a truck with their own tools. A lot of times we get to jobs and certain tools not in the truck, they gotta go get it because somebody else has it. So outfit each employee to have a truck with their own toolbox for tools. That's why I really wanna get this truck fixed so we have enough video to outfit them with tools.
So not this quote that's on there?
No, it's, it's cheaper, you can get it cheaper. He came and looked at the truck. So it's not my fault, so he, he felt more comfortable dealing with it than that.
What was this?
Uh, I talked to him today, I don't have any rights, it was twenty five, a little twenty five week thousand dollars to do that motor.
Well, great, that would cost a lot more money.
Who's truck is this?
Uh, Rick probably got it.
All right.
Listen, I think you have some in your packet with various.
Do we need to put it on that?
Yeah.
I, I make a motion that we approve the cost of rebuild the motor for the two thousand eight F one fifty.
Again, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, that we build this motor, two thousand eight Ford F one fifty. There we are. Move, say, motion carries.
Second discussion, I think we talked about it last meeting, about golden park at night. I think in the packet, I don't think it's gonna leave, it's, it's kinda small. It's real small. If you bury city, I think like city people, you know, their parks they open twenty four seven, but they don't have any issues. But they have police department at control, Arizona. They're cheap when their park is open nine to five. They don't have any issues. Go down to Henry Beck Park, they have a park manager, they park it open ten AM to seven PM. English. There's open from eight AM to sundown every day. They don't have any vandalism.
And they have any more vandalism since we talked about.
People just go out there, you know, fully there, you know, it's, you know, it's still.
Oh, still?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this question is, you know, if we decide we don't have hours at the park, it's gonna be open? Or it's gonna remain open twenty four seven? To me, personally, I'll be like, you know, at certain time in the evening at night. We'll be still there.
Well, there's, there's some people that go out there in the evening because it's cooler than in the daytime. But. I mean, that's probably the reason I have. But. Even if we do from sunrise to sundown, and they start with the youth league stuff, the baseball, softball, it's still gonna be open.
Yeah, that's always the issue, you know, with the coaches, the last one would use it, they don't want to get, they don't want the bathroom to be filled.
And then people can still get in there.
Oh, yeah, they don't want people to walk in.
They just can't make a vehicle.
Right.
They can still get in there, they have a lot of stuff.
But it's the bathroom, the large, the biggest thing too. We can't lock the bathroom with that gate open.
Yeah.
Well, they just break it, you know, when they, and when we tried, when they tried locking the bathrooms before, they was breaking, tearing up the door to get in the bathroom.
Not a little yet. So there's sort of, you know, and a lot of people used to be there, maybe at four. Uh, sometime, hour clock in the morning, walking there. They gotta be, be there, there's somebody to be.
Yeah.
They be at the five o'clock or five o'clock in the morning.
That's, that's something I know that's cool, dude.
So you come across this.
It just depends, you know.
How about the more cameras? I mean, the cameras work in, in the cases that we've had.
Yeah.
And if we advertise, or look, maybe intensify the advertisement that you're being watched out there, maybe, maybe.
But the, the concern that I have is, you know, if we leave it open, we have a two bathrooms that stay open. We have a, you know, to me, that's not, you know, we say, okay, come in, if you can use your door there, use the restroom. And that's always been one of my concerns there, because they're open, you leave the lights on, it's still.
I was told that somebody was staying in the bathroom.
Or still, you know, nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, twelve o'clock at night, one o'clock even more, you know.
I know we don't have our own police department, but I mean. Is too much to ask them if they have the office in the town to just ride.
They do, they do. They do for many things.
I, I've been out there on the surface ages from, when I would, I would be going in there as a champ myself and that was, I would leave one coming out and doing the other, whatever.
This situation where you're gonna have some people that's, you know, some people are curious, they're gonna do some things, you know. On the average, everybody is not vandalizing, you know, but on occasions you're gonna have, it's like what you get, you know, somebody, they get his bag, get it.
Oh, I've seen that, like, the one on the other end.
So since I've been here, that's the fourth time.
You gotta get in this press briefing.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
It's been probably the third time since I've been here.
Wait, not bring it home? Just bring it in.
Pipe gates.
My.
The bag gate?
Yeah.
The other thing.
I guess it comes up, twenty forty, the current city people making a right. I mean, I know that that's, you know. Like, going slower to hit you.
You think that if you put a flash, are they not?
I have, oh, I have, um.
Yeah.
Down there.
Oh, so.
You know, when you come off the lights, you got the lights on, you're gonna see.
It's brilliant.
When you go, you don't see that. That's.
Ain't no big guy having a mic on.
Well, I do know too, that there was a problem before that when you are like Google mapping or whatever stuff, it doesn't show that that road is closed off. And so you turn on and you don't know it's closed off, well, you should, you should speed like that.
Sorry, I don't know through that, I'm trying to, I'm looking. If you're somebody, you know, if you're out or not, you probably don't know that the road's closed, you need to make a right. They're not closing.
See, the only thing about go through traffic, you take that other road and go straight down by the big marathon. So the roads are right there, so.
That's what I'm.
How many, how many cameras?
Two, three, more, more than that.
Think motion sensors or alarms might, or might go?
Put this thing, you know. If you put a alarm, then people can.
It's gonna take time.
I like.
So before you get to where that fence is right there, is there a speed bump that will draw your attention to it before you get?
Of course, it's a counter.
Like a.
It would be nice to, you know, I thought about that, but it can't, it can't. If we go up on, if you leave by two or three, really, I mean, from the time that he turn off, you know.
Could you do a, could you do a motion light with a sign that when you look, you're gonna look at the motion light that goes off as you are being recorded?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, if you, if you allow the, uh. Advertising, I mean, you know, I mean, we got, we got signs up since, you know, there's some places. We also got signs up saying they're dogs, I see plenty of dogs out there too. And, and you can't please everybody, you know, we can't lock certain senses.
I said, we put up more cameras than to do a live feed, so anybody can see what's going on.
I'm gonna rotate that phone. I said, I'm gonna get that phone, you're gonna rotate that through.
Yeah. Could have, no, don't put it on YouTube, you know, the top of the. With the bear. And I know this for a fact, that it was at the school system, I heard that yes, that it was heard near and far out there while it took place. And we did get the, in that particular case, not all of them, but in that particular case, we did get money to repair it.
Hey, you're gonna have some, you're gonna have some stuff. There's no camera in the back, you know, so, but he going in the back, and that's what some of the vendors, you know.
But we did get that, that particular one was a bathroom, and what the picture clearly showed of him and he going outside at the time. So, I don't know, I just, that's my.
Cameras, watching the dish and. Whether maybe catch a license plate.
That's what I'm gonna say, someone's gonna take, it's gotta be worse than catch a license plate. So, person, a lot of people get stuck down there, or they call somebody who comes in, like, time, we just get them.
Yeah, they just get in, they go to the same here, somebody, they forget it.
Well, I mean, that's.
They're not getting, they're not getting, so he just get it out of his hand.
Oh. It's saying they get it.
Or just playing. They just can't.
About some cameras.
Yeah. Cameras are counted on this one.
That would be a lot of deposition, I think it's by, that's pretty much all I can do because you can't close it off and keep people from getting.
You can put cameras on the tree, I've done that at rentals several times. We had, we had a rental that somebody stole the stove out of the first day it was open. And I, I got a hunter camera and put it on the tree in front of the.
So we need to retire them, are there trees available to be able to shoot them down to the.
Gates?
The whole wall. You can even put a sign up and say, where is the fire?
We really can't do that.
We're using this just that.
The camera that one's out right now, looks the worst of that. It'd be rather useless.
Scouts and places.
Yeah, I was gonna say, take out the, what the IT guy that. Yeah, I was gonna say, take out the, what the IT guy that, oh, yeah, it's like, it's raised, it's on the.
He's in here, uh.
What you coming back with? Oh.
I want to next to do this, trust me, he's got one of those.
Yeah.
Do you recite this?
Besides the.
So, consensus is limited of banks in the D H I.
For now. Camera, let's put some, you know, some kind of monitor track that people turn it off.
Go down.
Running your aid.
So, higher park rate is new, why don't we be good there for three and four o'clock in the morning, go to the gate? That's been winning the high school, the mayor park rate.
Oh, am I, am I talking about the, um, somewhere else? That's a yellow thing that.
Yeah, those gates, those are, they were still here too.
Yeah, that. That would be, that would be easy to find. So, if I can, if I can call Stacy about a speed bump and get one installed when everybody's here, yeah, yeah. If they're gonna okay for. If you know, the barricaded gates, the, how are you doing that?
Yeah, when it comes off at twenty-four. Yeah, with Google D, it's probably gonna be. See, I know, there's, there's ones, you know, where those messages are pressing there, you know, you know, sign, uh, wall, and, because it needed to be, it don't need to be right up on the gate.
No, no, before.
Yeah.
So, what I mean, like.
Like, in front of their house, you know, around there with the, with the, uh, people. Right before you get to. Yeah, before, yeah, before you get to, with the main street, we've got that, that's all we're, we're for there. I heard, you know, you, maybe we could get a, if we do that, put a speed bump, we could have a, one of those flashing signs, you know, stating that the speed bump is, and the gate was there. But if we, if ever your gate.
Flash on that signal. Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna be okay with that, because he's, uh, he told me that they tried to hardly ever put those anywhere, because people depend on the lights. And so when the lights go out, and then they're not replaced, and nobody has been pointing the light run out, then they feel like we are acting wrong because of the light was not there.
You can buy battery operated flashing lights, that you could actually connect to the gate, like, I'm pretty sure they have those at Walmart, like, just a little blinking light, battery operated, so on the gate, at least to like, they don't have to be really. But do you think it's because people don't see it, like, they just go right through and they don't care?
They're probably drunk.
Maybe, uh, you get out the gate, you don't see it either.
Right, I mean, sometimes they literally leave their lights, like, the light falls off their car, and we, we give it to the desk.
They, they, they call one person, you know, that. You know, when you, when you, you get a light, you got a yellow light, person that didn't enjoy it.
I can do that. Why, I'm with the. And the speed bump. So, if they, if they say this on the speed bump, does everybody hear, okay with it? And maybe a little new traffic sign?
He's already done that.
They got another traffic.
That thought it says new trucks.
New traffic. More two trucks, I'm just for twenty-four. So, you get, you know, okay. Um, the last thing on this is the, the light that we're calling out, that we're gonna set to the main street and come for, and it's in the package, it's two options, I guess, you're just saying that, um. We could wait until they repave it in twenty twenty-four, and then do something with the light on the floor, or you can go ahead and pay for it, and if we build, and we build T P, or pay for it, they can. They don't, they don't.
They say how much it was?
Main street, and I'll get this one, get you it, oh, yeah.
Did it say how much it would be?
Um.
No. Do you, do you know about how much it cost?
You want the power company? It's not power, is there power board, I think, for going, right?
Yes, yes.
You know, I think it gonna be, it's not a goal there, the one that the light, the one, that's what they gonna be putting, so, you know, so they gotta control light, um.
Well, I ain't gonna lie to you.
If they make it, if they make us just do a light, it's probably like five hundred bucks, but we gotta buy a whole end light, it's probably like fifteen hundred bucks.
They gotta replace that hole anyway, sorry, something wrong with it.
It's very dark, yeah.
If they say, we gonna make y'all buy a hole, it's gonna be fifty hundred bucks, that's what I'm saying. Is that their discretion, everyone's got any light?
Well, it, it, it needs to be something there, something.
It's very dark, it's very dark, I, I, I actually went down there.
You know, it used to be a light, and the light, I think the light that was there was on the pole, that's at the end.
Yeah, one of the times, like, there.
Yeah.
Is that light just not there?
They took it, they took it off, ran out of the one.
Oh, that's who it was? It was ran out?
That's the one to go.
Oh.
It was on a personal property, so they had.
They had to pay for it, you get one on your personal property, it's like seventy bucks a month.
Okay.
What was you gonna do about that?
What was it?
So, you want.
Y'all wanna light, we can buy, we can buy a light.
Well, um, I make motion to give a light there as soon as possible.
I know.
I said, dark.
I know.
That's that. Motion, in a second.
That's a, that's that, so.
Like, you have to, did you determine which way we're going to go with that?
You want it now, you don't want to wait till twenty-four, that's your point, yeah.
Yeah, it's dark, it's very dark.
Dark. All right, I've got a motion in a second, purchase a light. All right, so, you got it?
All right.
Got a motion, motion.
Chris, I have a question about the sign on the corner of, um, High Street and Hurst, it is almost illegible, you almost can't even see what it says. Is there any kind of way, from the city, is there any kind of way that we can get our sign cleaned, and then whatever kind?
You're supposed to do more, and you can work through that, start working.
Yes, sir, okay.
What's on there to do is they just wanna wait until the mess is over, and then they have their time, I think.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I knew that, but I figured that if y'all were gonna clean them off first, that we just clean after that, maybe we'll could do it later. But that one is almost illegible, it really is. Yes, sir. You almost can't even see, and there's, the, also, also, the, um, the sign, when you're coming on Main Street, and you get to the curb, there's bushes in front of that curb sign.
On Main Street?
Yes, sir, like, right before you get in Mr. Reese's house, there's a sign that says curb, and the, there's bushes in front of the sign. Well, it's, it's a tree that's got bushes hanging down in front of the.
Where?
You know, on Main Street.
She said right there before you get in. But it's count.
In the pocket?
Mm-mm, it's before you get there, it's before you get in Mr. Reese's house, there, it's just a sign.
That says curb, well, you can't see the sign.
When you say that, main street?
Main Street, right there in front of Mr. Reese's house.
It's a curb sign.
Mr. Reese's house.
Oh, Teresa, that, that's when you're going toward, when you turn off twenty-four?
Yes, sir, you can't see it.
Does it bother people, Teresa?
I'm saying.
There's a layup, bushes on this.
Mm-mm, but them trees, they hanging there right in front of the.
Yeah, we try, we, 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 that is a county, that's a county.
But they, we have to, we judge them and ask them, ask them, can you do trees all the time, so, you know, I can ask them, you're just saying to cut them back, right?
Yeah, just so we can see the sign.
Okay.
We're gonna pass them to cut back the tree.
Well, see if they'll do it before we just go do it, we can ask them if they'll.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, you.
Oh, Dennis.
One thing I got is a special of my contract. Okay, so, as you guys know, we put this agreement for the fire chief together, um, September, because the last meeting in September was from June, um, that detailed all of the fire chiefs', um, basically roles and responsibilities. So, didn't have an end date on it, but, I mean, my contract was a year, so that's the reason why I'm bringing it before the council right now. You have quite a few members of the fire department that wanna speak on this agenda item, so I will go ahead and let them speak, and then discuss out.
Well, look, well, did I hear you just say, your contract was just a year?
First, the first year was just.
Oh, man, it's only two.
Now it's two, correct, now it's two. But I'm saying, that's why I'm bringing this back up, I'm assuming it would have been a year, so, I guess I will bring it up for discussion, but I would like the firefighters to go ahead and, and voice your opinion at this point, and then we can take it from there.
Can I just ask some questions before you get started?
Yes, ma'am.
What, uh, y'all put, start putting a date on the fire chief, um, contract, 'cause there's never been a date.
There's never been a contract until last year, we just put this together last year, actually?
Yeah, there, there was a contract somewhere in there, but there wasn't a date that said you was gonna end this, you know, the fire, uh, the fire chief actually just stayed until.
Right.
He didn't wanna stay, or she didn't wanna stay, or.
Right.
He decided to get rid of them, or.
Right, this is when we quit, we changed the position to be compensated in sixteen thousand per year, because it used to be the, he would get her call.
Right, everyone about the money.
We changed all that, correct, last year, so.
The important thing is, we never saw it, so there is no contract.
No.
Okay, so, who, who's going to speak? We have so much.
Mr. Moore, you said there was no, no signed contract?
No signed contract.
I signed a contract.
I'm gonna tell you about this one from last year.
From last year, I signed it and turned it in.
Okay. Can you state your name just so you have?
Steven, my name is Justin Maugh, I've been a firefighter anymore here across the fire for two years, in that time, I and other members.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, ma'am, I and other members, have had to deal with the toxic, the hostile work environment. I witnessed Chief Russel string that, cuss out, and talk down to, discourage, get physical, and present untrue statements to myself and other members. Chief Russel has made this department a one-man show, members are not involved in very, members are not involved in very few of the decision-making processes. Members are not asked about their opinions on certain policies or procedures, but a new hire fresh out of fire school, when no prior experience here at Monster Fire, is helping Chief Russel amend and create new policies without any input from the current leadership. This is just one of many examples of bias displayed by Chief Russel. Chief Russel has an apartment vehicle that is owned by the town, that has been at his personal house for quite some time now. The chief denied me and other members our request for a red light card, claiming he did not have the A H A, the authority having jurisdiction. That statement is not true, the fire chief signs the card. Chief Russel makes rash accusations with no real evidence to back it up, such as accusing members of having a siren in their vehicle, claiming, quote, "Someone told me you had one," then asks to search their car for one. A confident of the chief has apparently looked into some members' vehicles, asking them what colors the lights they are displaying on their vehicles are, and why they have them. Recently, Chief Russel was not at the station when called out for an unknown type fire, the member at the station radioed he was responding with an engine, as Wilson Fire did not advise that they were responding. Chief Russel called that member and stated, "So, tell me this, why are you taking the engine?" Member explained the situation to Chief Russel, and he ordered the member, "Do not leave the station till I call you back." After about ten minutes of waiting, this member decided to call Chief Russel back, and he advised to take tanker. This is one of many examples of recklessness and micromanaging of incidents that he does not respond to. Other issues, members have been told they're too fat to fit in their fire gear when the fire gear is or a size too small for them. Members are not allowed to have pin numbers, but certain members are, but certain members aren't, and the reason why we were told that was because the counties has a limited number of fuel pins, that's completely incorrect, and we're over.
You got thirty-six.
Sorry, went over and talked with them, it's not true, he told us we couldn't have personal radios, we got that, told us he's gonna put new firefighters in a situation that makes us uncomfortable. Need to call him for permission to respond to calls when you're not at the station. I was assigned, another member, to a vehicle that was out of service, squad seventy during the storm. And you haven't been here long enough to take officer classes, that's what other people are told, and then wanna talk about advancement in the department and take other classes. That's all I have for you.
Listen in.
My name is Justin Maugh.
How long have you been working with me?
About two and a half years.
About what?
Two and a half.
Okay.
He's had a start of one since March tenth this year.
Yep, been involved here for two and a half years, firefighters since March.
In most of Texas?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what, is you, uh, you, what, what was that? All right.
Can you speak up?
Speak up, I could use.
Hi, I'm David Johnson, my name is Matthew Brownlee, I've worked with, um, Monster Fire before, I came back in July. I would like to contradict some things that Justin Maugh said. I have never heard Dennis Russel tell anybody that they were too fat to fit in fire gear. He will order any size you need, he always has a open door policy, so anything that is said, we, we can go to him about and not talk to other people. We have been told before that there are certain people that have, um, lights in our truck without a card. Our policy on cards, if I call correctly, is always if you live in county, or you do not get a card, or live in our district. I've never heard Dennis get loud with somebody who was vile. He has gotten one, like, once before, and that was because of something with policy, meaning that disagreement, but we figured it out, we talked it out, and we understood that it was wrong for those to get loud. And there was nothing else to say over it. And, um, fuel pins, he never said there was a limited number, he explained to us that there has been theft before in county, and in the firehouse, that's why he don't issue them just to nobody. Our fire too, that just came in, yes, he does help with some policies and procedures, but he's more certified than most of us, so we do like to ask him for help. And during the storm, if I recall correctly, Dustin was just, Dustin Maugh was in, um, Shane Miller were assigned to our brush truck, our squad. Our squad is out of service right now, but our brush truck is not serving, we just got it back from the shop, maybe a week ago. It was not out of service during the storm. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Adam, does, has anybody been hurt under Dennis's leadership?
No, ma'am, not Dennis, we not losing the situation, yes.
Have anybody been hurt under Dennis's leadership?
There have been injuries, but not you.
I'm happy with your mark.
Not that I'm aware of, not pretending to, Dennis Russell would have been injured on the job. And the squad, I actually have a picture, I was assigned to the squad, the squad was in service for the entire duration of the storm, and then was taken out of service after the storm passed. I have a picture of the whiteboard that he let the brand new guy assign us the trucks, and I'll remind you, me, there were three firefighters at the station for the storm, me, Shane Miller, and the new guy. Me and Shane Miller were assigned to the squad, which is known to have mechanical issues, as a first-out medical unit. That truck malfunctions and breaks down, two of your firefighters are not at the station in case there's a structure fire. If I'm in a medical call, and there's a structure fire, I'm not able to respond until a med unit gets there. We have other support members at the station to cover it on that squad. Once again, that squad does have a lot of mechanical issues, and it was only placed in service for the storm.
What's the new guy's name?
Jonathan Strong.
Who, which firefighter was it, put the, um, the fire truck in the ditch?
That was me.
That was you?
I did a turn on our field, and if you actually went out there, you can see where the road collapsed on the naked weight of the truck, and it slid into a ditch. Mindy, Matthew Bradley.
No, I'm talking, I'm not talking, I'm, I think we're talking about two different injuries.
Okay.
I'm talking about the one where there was a driveway, just a few feet.
That was Ian Gunter.
Who?
Ian Gunter. Now, Mindy, Matthew Bradley did rip the light off the brush truck when he pulled out of the station the other day.
So, you're the one that got it stuck in the sand?
No, that's Ian. Ian's the one that got it stuck in the sand. Ian was what they wanted.
That was Ian.
Are you talking about the incident where a piece of equipment was taken, or are you talking about the incident where a member was written up, and?
A member was written up?
That's the incident where the driveway was down the road, correct?
Right, that was the.
That's that's. Where the driveway was down the road.
Yeah, the driveway with an oak tree on it?
I don't know.
During the storm, yes.
I didn't see no tree on the ground.
Because they cut it off. Because it cut it off the driveway. That's the whole reason we were there, because it was blocking the road to the driveway.
They break mine off that truck, too.
Okay.
It was the structure fire that they backed down the driveway and took the man's pants off. Okay.
That was not mine.
That was not you?
No.
That was Ian?
That was...
Uh, that was...
That was me.
Are you ready?
Yes.
My name is Elizabeth Chukwueye. Uh, I have been a volunteer since twenty nineteen, uh, at the fire department. I've been a volunteer and part of the community much longer, uh, specifically since nineteen ninety-six, when my parents, Bill and Greta Brown, uh, started writing the foundation for what we do from the children's table. Uh, I have also given up my time as a U.S. Army service member. Um, so volunteering is kind of at the core of who I am, which is why I do genuinely believe that everybody here from the fire department on both sides of this issue, um, is, you know, coming to speak from their heart and, um, has all the good intentions, I agree. Um, my concern with this station right now, um, revolves around a lot of what concerns are being voiced by my coworkers, right? Um, there are, there's not a good organizational structure of leadership that gives you, uh, a definition of what it is that is expected of you. Um, the culture is not good. The culture is very toxic. Um, it is, it is difficult to communicate with leadership at times. Um, even though there is an open door policy, there is, um, a lot of hesitation on the part of the firefighters to bring up issues. So, in, in my kind of view of what is going on, is that the fire department is kind of at, um, juxtaposition, if you will. We are, we are at a change. And the question really sits with you all, what is it that you want from the fire department? And do you believe that the current leadership is capable of bringing the fire department with its new house, and its new trucks, and all of the new service members that are here, to where we need to be organizationally, culturally, um, and to really provide the service that Bronson needs? Do you have any questions for me?
They should have some questions. I'm waiting to see y'all there, but I'm not there.
You have questions for me?
No, no.
Oh.
They should have some questions. Uh, what, what my concern is, number one, uh, Mr. Dennis should be allowed to have his say in what was said about him. This is what I'm saying. They should be saying what I'm saying.
My concern is not necessarily just with Dennis. My concern is with the station as a whole. I have felt a lot of times, like, the station has mommy and daddy, where Dennis and Cindy, uh, kind of run the station, and everybody's just kind of there to show up. Even, uh, Matthew is Cindy's son, so, you know, like, there's, there's kind of like a network there that, um, can make it difficult for people to approach leadership.
So... Okay, do you think that... Cause I, from what I got from the whole situation was, is that there was, there was like lack of respect for leadership. Um, I, I felt like that was the ninety percent of the problem, was a lack of respect for the leadership, and lack of respect for things that we've gotten in this town that we've never had before.
So, um, I think that, uh, that's, my answer to that is two-part. One, respect is a two-way word, right? Um, I think that, um, a lot of the firefighters do not feel respected by the leadership. And they don't feel like their opinions and voices are heard, which is, um, you know, why they go out and look for other ways to feel heard. Um, the other part of that is, the leadership that is in place has been in place for many, many years, and we have seen a very, very high turnover of firefighters throughout. My question, uh, because I'm from this community, I know that, I know that firefighters have been hurt on the job because of decisions that were made. I can name one right off the top of my head, which was Keith Adams, whose mom used to own the Harrison lot, who broke his leg in a structure fire. Um, so, I, I do think that respect, uh, is lacking kind of all around. Um, but I, I feel like there is a kind of, uh, Vulcan desperate of control, and everybody's scrambling to try to control what's going on, and it has not been good for anyone.
Do you all have, uh, like, uh, recess meetings where everybody sit down and talk, preach, uh, make people...
Yeah, more recently Dennis has facilitated those. Um, and I do feel like, uh, they have been productive in getting people to kind of, uh, discuss some of this stuff. Um, I think the major concern that a lot of people in the department have is that we kind of have these discussions, and then everything kind of falls.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
So how do you, do you have?
Um, I took a hiatus, I had surgery in January, so I hadn't been, uh, and I was injured before that, so I was off for about a year. Um, but prior to that, we haven't had any. Um, it was when I came back, uh, more specifically when Dennis came back from New York, um, you know, we started having this, you know, area of discussions.
Do you have a lead on in the firehouse for, um, situations that you don't wanna discuss with, uh, Mr. Russell?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And do you think that the respect for leadership would change if Mr. Flip was the chief? Or do you think, because...
So, I have been asked this before about who I deal with as a chief, and my answer has always been the most qualified person.
Yes.
Right, so, and, and as a fire chief, um, it's much less being about the firefighter, and much more about being a leader, being an organizer, being involved in the community. Just to give you an idea, I've been there, like I said, since twenty nineteen. The first time I have ever seen any of the department's financials was when, uh, Mr. Flip asked me to help him with that recently, when you guys adopted the budget. Uh, prior to that, I have no knowledge of any of how that happened.
All right. What were the odds that someone tonight was going to mention the Vulcan desperate? I'd love to know the odds on that.
I'm a trackie, so that's okay.
Do we all know what it is?
I do.
Well, no, I'm, uh, this man.
Hi, um, my name's Amber Robinson. Um, I'm a new volunteer firefighter at the, at Bronson Fire Rescue. I recently started at this station because of, uh, Chief Russell specifically. Um, I had spoken to him wanting to work at the station before he had been suspended for the thirty days. When I heard that he was suspended, I decided to wait until he started as the chief again. I did not wanna start at the station, um, because I wanted him to be the person to help train me. Um, when I spoke to Chief Russell about working at fire, the fire station, he was very kind, straightforward, and very understanding. He has helped me through every step of the way, through the hiring process, and as I started my classes that I needed for the station. Um, when I was start, having troubles with FEMA and the WILD program, or the WILD class was supposed to do, he was very willing to help me figure it all out. When Cindy was teaching me how to do the incident reports, and how to put them in the system, Chief Russell helped me when I was confused and, uh, was not comprehending what we were doing. He was very patient and never belittled me, um, when I asked lots of questions, but I got confused very quickly. He makes the station welcome me, and with his kindness and generosity. He is the main reason I chose to work at the station. I wanted him to be the chief that trained me and taught me how to do it, cause I'm starting from the bottom to the top. I'm very low knowledge on everything. Um, I had gone to a few station meetings, including the hurricane, and it showed me how he has strong leadership. He makes, in my opinion, he makes it a very welcome environment. Every time I had been in the station to work, not once had I heard Chief Russell yell anyone. Um, besides the situation that Mr. Bradley was talking about. Um, but that ran away, and they went into a room, and they spoke to each other like civilized humans, and got everything situated. Um, and he even spoke at the hurricane meeting how he wanted to be a better chief, and...
Thirty-six.
How...
Well, we don't need that, sir. This, this lady is hot. This is serious. I used to do any jokes.
This is a fair alert. We are in charge of this meeting, okay? You don't have to tell the...
This, I will have you moved. Have them...
We are listening to the lady tentative.
This is serious. This is, this is, this is...
Hey. The logic is that... Calm down. I stopped talking to you at the same time.
Um, he even spoke on how he has an open door policy, because if they wanna give concerns for anyone, they, he can either go behind the door and have one-on-one conversation, and they don't have to go to him specifically. They can go to any lieutenants that they have, tell him, or tell them, and then they would go to Russell, won't even have to say their name. And he just made it seem very open and honest, and if you're, when I notice when people are concerned about their name being said, you never have to have a name being said, and you still have the situation brought up.
I agree too. When, when did you start with the department?
Um...
Now, I have meetings and...
Um, I've been going to the last few meetings, like, a couple months, but I started officially being able to do things last week, like, calls and stuff.
I'm sorry, are, are you with Matthew?
Yeah, I believe Matthew is her agent.
He's not the only one that's been, he's not the first again, then, be, you know, after this, my interview, and how I...
I'm gonna call a timeout. Intermission.
I'm asking myself.
Wow, that was... That was really high, wasn't it?
I don't want that.
Did, did you know everything about this stuff?
Yes.
This is rough. This is tough to do.
Yeah.
He, uh, this, I was, right? All of the, and you are...
There's two of them.
Yes, we, come here. There's two of them.
There's many, many discussions, yes. Yes, there's been many, many discussions in my...
Okay. Well, that's...
I've had many discussions with lots, many of the people in the audience, yes.
How you doing?
This has been going on for several months, yes.
About five or five?
Yes. Our whole family, yes. Yes.
So, can you, okay, because you do evaluate, both of you, like that, right? How do you feel about Russell?
We'll tell you that after. You don't have to.
Do that?
Yes. Yes, it's on the record if you want, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I want them to all have their say first.
Okay.
Okay? And what is it like? Yes?
He isn't that...
This is the second meeting.
We already got information, we've been here since... I've been no smash.
They're all the work, and you're fast, I can promise you.
It's just, it's the same way in school. One of them got a little, he got ten more years. It reminds everybody that they have...
I thought that you said it was a diary.
So, I wasn't gonna make it to the end.
All right, now, you gotta stop pouring the water.
That's all I got left. I sit there, I, I sat there for five minutes debate, but I'm gonna ask you to stop this for a second.
We rewrote everything, took the plexiglass up there to fade, so it should be, we redid the book.
No, no, that's...
The, the, the stuff we put on it? Yeah. You're coming to the meetings, you know, we got center meetings, right? You have to hold it down. There's no place to go to eat. I'm bringing them. This is Russell.
Personal, personally, you got a mean sandwich?
I wanna make my life, where? You got a little thing on the corner?
Eat the sushi, though.
Sushi.
The little...
Yeah, they got...
It's not the wall, wow.
They got, they got meat breakfast sandwiches.
You got to be there, okay?
No, I'm not.
You can't be a bad man.
Well, I never seen it.
You, you...
I never seen it.
I know what I'm after, see, you're not gonna do it. What's in my weight for it? It's not good, it's... I did give you, uh, any of these agreement things, but you may have... This is people, this is... They got it on for your watch. Now, let's show, they don't care.
Intermission.
Sue, do you have a copy of that little memo I did this afternoon on that statue? Rather than...
I did print it out, I did not.
Okay, you don't have to.
You got it, I sent it to all of them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that, it's, yeah. Okay, are we...
All right, meet back in the... All right, uh, who wants to speak next? Yes.
Hey, you know, uh, right, I'm gonna do this for a long time. When, uh, when the president, uh, that, where, but, meetings are supposed to be three times a month. Every seven, three, four months, and, uh, there's supposed to be a standard for them. It's gonna be, go and have a training to do the job. Recently, that hasn't happened, or nobody wants to come to me. My folks come to me. And listen, I'm sorry about what I said about shirts wherever you are. We had to order some new shirts for females. We haven't been doing that in fast, I'm sorry, for what I said about that. But the gear, we have a man coming in that fits you, and by that, and you gain weight before you give this here. That is not our fault. It's personally things that go wrong. And also, we have people that wants to backtalk. They don't want to do anything in this fire department. You ask them to do something, they sit on the button, they don't want to take... They don't want to do what you're supposed to do. And I have not seen Dennis do anything wrong to nobody in this fire department. He does like saying, "No, I'm not." I put it back anyway. But other than that, he hasn't done anything to this. And I've been in this fire department thirty-six years. Since John Trainor's fire chief, remember him? I told him this department eighty-eight, and I can not hear what he does to storm, but for my country. And I come back, and still the same person, still do the same thing, same thing. And I went to school twice already for it, and I have to one more time, have to learn that again. But I'm about seventy years old, and I love this fire department. And I'm gonna stay in this fire department, and I hope that y'all make Dennis fire chief, because he hasn't done anything wrong. And I do know it's a bunch of backstabbing going on, and I don't care for that, I don't like it. And I love this department, and I love the members that's in, everybody. Not just the ones that's calling trouble, everybody. And that's why I got said about it, and I'm sorry, I mean, people used to have to patrol their temper also. And it's got a certain person in this fire room right now that does lose their temper quick. He don't go his way, he loses his temper quick, and starts cussing. You know, he started cussing, he wants to fight, so... And that certain person also said that I was spying on fire department for Dennis. No, I ain't spying on the fire department on Dennis. If I was spying on him, he would have never seen me.
You could.
You know, I learned that a long time ago. I remember when Richard, that was fire chief, Steph, and all that, fire department was screwed. And so these new guys come in there, they don't want to fill out the course like they're supposed to be filling out. And that is wrong, because if something happens to the computer goes down, how you gonna find out what you did? You're not, unless you got paperwork to back yourself up. It has happened to the military, the unit I went to, there's a storm whip, all the paperwork got destroyed. And they called me and asked if I still had my copies of them. I said, "Yes, I had my copies." And the people that were in the desert storm, they said, "Everybody's still in hood, man." And I had to turn it in.
No, I said, "Your time is up." All right, who's next?
My name is Shane Miller, I've been a firefighter about two years now. I am new to this community, I'm different from here two years ago. You want to know if I moved up here? Background of public service working in EMS and hospital, working down in the area. Joining out of the department, I developed a good bond with the big majority of the members. However, if you notice, there was a toxic environment in terms of distrust to the membership and what I feel could be a life for some. The... When you get a... In the firefighters, you have to be able to trust the guy right next to you with your life. And I trusted those, both of us. And unfortunately, with how I've seen the leadership in this department built, I feel that I'm not trusted to do my job, being that if I ask to do or need to do anything, I'm told, "No, we're doing it this way." Or, "No, you can't drive a certain truck or use certain equipment, because you might break it." I'm willing to, then I want to use it. When I'm working with the people I've grown to be friends with, which is the big majority of the department, I have an absolute great time serving the citizens of Bronson County. And I love to continue that. Under new leadership, I feel that can change for the better. We are heard, we are felt like we're entrusted, and we feel like that we can make this department what it's meant to be. I do feel that the current leadership truly has the best interest of the department at its heart. However, I feel that progression is an important thing, it's something we're looking for in our service. And it's needed. There has an instance of yelling, screaming, unprofessionalism from certain members of the department. And of course, things do get heated, do get stressed, but it is still an unprofessional act, especially when it happens up front of the public, which I've seen. It looks bad in the department. So that's why I'm standing here today to say I do feel a change would be a positive benefit for the department.
Thirty seconds.
How long is you here?
About two years, sir. I've been in the fire service for five.
Where?
Around Tampa, a little bit called Fort Ridge. And I work for two different police departments down there.
There you go. I'm Cynthia Waters, I've known Dennis for ten years on the department. I've never seen him cuss anybody, throw his hands up at nobody, or injure anybody on a scene. If he doesn't pull his say, he will not let them enter the scene. He tries to do what he has to do to make the department an excellent department. Now, I have been screamed at, thrown hands at by another member of the department, and I feel like that he just got a smack on the hand and walked free. Shouldn't have been. There's been other people that write this individual up for cussing, acting out, and angering a shoe. And nothing's been done to him on the department. But you have a gentleman that, like I said, I've been with him ten years, he's never put his hands on anybody, he's never cussed anybody. You know, he might raise his voice if they do something stupid, trying to stop them from doing it, to protect them, to pull them back. People do not have respect for Chief Russell in this department. They backtalk him, they argue with him, they bust with him. And you can hear it when they're doing it, because they're doing it in front of other members. And it's not acceptable to the department. That's all I have. What? Nick?
Hello, my name is Karen Kirk.
Karen, I'm sorry, say your last name.
Karen Kirk, K D R. Recently, I was back with Bronson Fire Department, which dues my record, K D R. I worked with these guys, all of them, pretty much, the Lord ones, twenty-something years. I do wildfires for the federal eight agencies on the contract. I worked with Dennis, I worked with Jesse and Gell Foot in the past. I worked with Wilson for sixteen years. We respond to the back of Bronson pretty much everything. Not once. Yells been there, every scene I've been on. Hands down, great worker. Dennis Russell, I worked with. Most of the time, he didn't show up or anything, but the thing about it is, when I worked with Wilson, majority of it, seventy-five percent of my night calls were here. It's not the personnel, it's the lack of leadership that wants the personnel to be working at all. They don't want to work here. I'm not bringing up nobody's records, but that's the majority of the lot they don't want to work. I've been to y'all's fire department. It's probably, I have friends work for Leader County. I have other people that have been around, they ask me, "Hey, once you join, try to join." I try. Just because I have a lawful certification doesn't mean I can't work on fire department. It's not a felony. Even what it states. Why? Even if I have my marriage and all that stuff, through court system, that people look at, it's been dropped, adjudicated. I work in hand on fire service still, never lost my certifications. I have my boss who backed me, I have other people, I have an employee that works for us right now, I've worked twice. All I hear from other new members, how the anticipation for the stress level they have to work at. Nobody should work in on that stress level. Even though this is fire service, I don't know if y'all have, y'all been up to the fire department lately, but look at your trucks. You got a truck and an engine
Accesses.
That's running a car. I watched it to a vehicle accident, looked at the light bar. That's another, that's another. You have people that have hardly no certifications, running their trucks. It's a loud billy to y'all as an insurance. If somebody pulls out for that truck, they then work an emergency vehicle operation force. They look at it. I have to keep all my certifications intact. But like I said, I'm not trying to come into it as a, well, trying to get a job with y'all. I'm trying to support these guys down here, because this is not for a change. And it's a new change, because everything's going to go on new.
What, Nick?
Hi, my name is Tanae Lamardrum. And just recently, I was a volunteer fire fighter, volunteer for the fire department. However, I've been terminated, if you will, for lack of participation, I suppose. But in 2021, I volunteered and I witnessed, you know, Dennis and Cindy and Matthew having some conflict, family issues. So it arises a question for me is, what is the policy for relationship in the department? Can you be living together? Can you be in a relationship? Can you, you know, be actively dating? What is our policy?
The city policy states that if a person is in power, as any boss, chief, whatever, you cannot date or be involved with somebody that sits beneath you. That's the city policy.
As your employee, if you're a volunteer...
In your guidelines, it states if you are a volunteer firefighter, you are considered a part-time city employee, so therefore you follow the city regulations.
So I bring this question about mainly because, you know, it is hard to serve as a participant in a situation like that, when, you know, you witness things and you don't know how to respond, you don't know how to act. You don't want to be involved in that, because you want professionalism. You want to be able to serve your city, your county. You know, you want to be able to build camaraderie together and have a team that is going to put your life on the line for each other. And you shouldn't have conflict, and you do need leadership. You need someone to tell you what to do, when you need to do it, and be alongside of you, and to show up, even when you don't feel like showing up. You know? And so I'm a little conflicted, and I do want to participate and be a volunteer for the fire department, but I don't want drawn. You know, I have, my time's valuable, and, you know, I don't have time for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick?
I'd like to rebut some comments made. July fourth incident, Dennis Russell, sorry, I'll come up, I'll come up. On July fourth incident, Dennis Russell grabbed a member by the shirt, cussed him out for doing something he thought he wasn't supposed to do. That member is on a call right now, unable to speak, but I figured I'd bring that up. Matthew was actually at that very incident on July fourth, so it's funny that they're going to claim that they never seen him do anything like that, because I would have said with my own eyes, and so did several other members, and I said, "The member who that happened to is on a call right now." But I figured I'd bring that up. Also, Matthew and Amber have been on the department since pretty much around the time of the storm, so they've been around for most of the events that were discussing, because most of the events that were discussing happened before the storm occurred, which is before their time on the department. So I'd like to bring that to the attention of everybody as well. If you had gotten a physical...
That's what I said before you, Andrew.
Yeah. Also, I mean Shane Miller was here when I was at this firehouse, I ran a structured fire, and the member who was only working that night was out of fire all day. I stayed there at the station until almost midnight and said, "I'll take the calls, because you need to go home and shower and get your kids and relax a little bit before you take the night shift." A call came out south of the zone, I was the closest unit, and I took that call, it was chest pain. I took that call, canceled him off of it, and when did the call on came back? Got a phone call from Chief Russell, wanting to know why I took the squad to a call, this is before the squad was out of service, because I was the closest unit. That wasn't a good answer, because I was on a shift that night, so I wasn't supposed to respond. If y'all's family members have a chest pain, just a life-threatening emergency, sign up a heart attack. Do you want somebody coming from University Oaks to go south of this station? Do you want someone coming from this station that's ten minutes closer to go to that call? It's all about response times, these hot calls. These are life-threatening emergencies. And I got cussed out and reamed out on the phone, and Shane heard it for doing that. I know if it was my family member, I'd unlock whoever's closest and certified to go to that call. And I told everybody, "I'm here to give this other member who's covering tonight, who has children, who worked at fire for seven hours in the heat, to get a break, to get a shower and relax, so that he can get ready for the night shift," because he had work in the line, at his full-time job. And I was scrutinized for that. And it's this type of just discouragement of being a team player at certain appointments, and it just really takes the drive out of you. I don't even live in this county. I live in Trenton. I came here to be a volunteer firefighter, because y'all had a sign up out front when I arrived through town one day, that said, "Volunteers needed." And that's what I'm here for. I'm here to help people. This is not my community, I adopted it. I come here to help out this community. And other members do too. Shane doesn't live here, he lives in Trenton. We're here for the community. But we feel like our time is invaluable here, and we're not valued as personnel, and what we're doing doesn't matter sometimes. And that's very hard for us to keep volunteering our time. We all work full-time jobs. This is like a second full-time job. I come from home many nights to help out, grab equipment and trucks. This is like a 24/7 commitment. I keep my pager on all the time, and when they need help, I come. But I feel very discouraged, and it's hard for me to keep doing this with current leadership and the actions that have been taken against me and other members that I consider family.
First of all, I want to say thank you
Yes, ma'am.
for volunteering. And everybody in here that spends their time volunteering for our community, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
However, there are some times where you guys are, it seems like you guys are inflaming certain situations. And then with the red light cards that y'all went and got when Dennis said that you were not supposed to have. You know that what you did was inflaming the situation, right?
What I did is in...
And then you went behind his back and got your cards from him.
That card was given to me, not requested by him. This card was issued to me by him, not requested through him.
But weren't you already denied from him?
I was. And then he took the interim chief spot, and he issued us a card.
That is such a, that was so inflaming to him for this whole situation.
Well, I think the real big issue is that members who aren't fire certified are allowed to engage in firefighting activities, have red lights on their vehicles, but...
The only reason why Dennis didn't give it to you is because you lived outside of the district.
But there's nothing in the town policy or the department policy that states anything like that. The big reason we were denied...
What it states is, it states that it's the captain's discretion. That's what it states. It states that...
It's chief's discretion, yes.
Yeah, that's exactly who it is. I can give you the statute.
Okay, and the state statute also doesn't say you have to live in county, live in district, it's in the state.
No, but the reason why he kept you in the district is because if you get into a wreck, you are covered inside the district. That's, I mean, he did it to cover his butt.
I don't see that. I've never seen that in writing, and I went through this policy thoroughly.
No, but what is in writing is that it's up to the chief, right?
Okay, it's up to the chief for discretion. What's the merit behind that?
The merit behind it is you still have to take direction from higher adults, and that's what the problem is.
The problem is, it may be a personal decision against other members. The problem is it's a person, it may be a personal decision against other members.
From the chief.
Yeah, based on a personal bias.
Then you have to respect the chief.
I respect, I respected his decision. And then another chief who came in issued the card. I didn't go behind his back and ask somebody who wasn't qualified to give a card, to give a card. Our card was given.
That situation, um, so it does seem like there is a lack, and I think this is the point that Dustin, Dustin is trying to make, is that there is a lack of consistency of how policies are applied. Uh, a very good example personally for me is that I have been here since October of 2019 and I still do not have Fire One. These two guys came in after me and were given Fire One. There's, there's not a consistent organizational structure of how things are put out for members in this department.
Well, I personally think that no matter how this goes, the whole entire fire department needs to be reorganized. Because it doesn't matter who y'all's leader is, you have to have respect for him. For the simple emergency of your job. You're gonna get hurt if you don't listen to your chief. It's just gonna happen. It, it's, it's gonna happen. That's the reason why it's so important. And I know that all of y'all take our, our jobs very seriously because there's, you know, there's a lot at stake, which is your health and your life.
So again, a lot of times, um, we feel like there's not a consistent layout for what is expected of us. So it kind of feels a lot of the times like we're running through a forest blindfolded and then getting yelled at every time we hit a tree, right? So there's, there's no real better way to describe that feeling in the department other than that.
I would like to bring up most of the members, um, coming from home or coming from home because members in district are not responding.
We did have an incident about, we can have it two weeks ago. It was a structured fire in our zone. Luckily, our full-time firefighter was here. However, he was responding by himself. It wasn't a structured fire, it was a barn and a boat. Uh, the only other volunteers that responded were myself and Dest. We were coming from home. We did so safely. We got to the scene and we were thanked heavily by the full-time member who was gassed. Because you cannot be firing your house by a very self-safely.
Just be you had a question.
I just want to, you know, this really saddens me. You can see how you all are divided. This side don't like that side, that side. And the council has been like that. You know, I, I went through it for 20 years, you know, it was like that. But I didn't get on the council for me, not for personal reasons. I love Bronson. I've been here 68 years and I love Bronson and I love the people of Bronson. I always wanted to do what was best for the citizens of Bronson. And I know when you volunteer here, it's not about the money. The council is not about the money, trust me. So you're doing it for a reason. But you come to that thing, you let the enemy defeat you all. It's defeating the purpose of the fire department. We're here to protect the people of Bronson. And now you all have gotten so far apart. Dennis and Gail used to be good friends. Gail was here a long time ago, Dennis was here. Is Dennis the best fire chief? No, I'd be the first to admit that. But is Dennis dependable? Dennis has been here when nobody else was. When everybody else walked away, Dennis was here. And there was a letter floating around somewhere. It was an ugly letter, you know, that tried to get him out of the fire department. Why? Maybe he shouldn't be fire chief. Maybe Gail shouldn't be fire chief. Maybe they should be co-chiefs. Maybe they can come together because both of them has a lot of knowledge. I know Gail has a lot of knowledge, Dennis has a lot of knowledge. So why can't they come, why you two can't come together and put aside your differences and your friends and let the enemy, you know, get into your mind? It's, it's not. We wouldn't have a fire department, I'm gonna tell y'all now, if it wasn't for Dennis. He kept fighting and fighting. I want to put in this grant so we can get this new fire department. Why do you need a fire department, Dennis? You can't even control the one you got. That's what I would tell you. I'd say, you got one here, you can't even control this. But he kept on and he kept on until he and the other guy wasn't left. They wrote a grant to get that fire department. And it's almost a $2 million. And it looks good. And he stuck it out. I even had to fire more time, he can tell you. But he redeemed himself and he came back. But Dennis know how far to go. And he can, you know, get out of the way. But once he know that you are watching him and you want to do what's right, that's what he's gonna do, what's right. But now I see you all have, when you get like this, it's a bad situation. And the council, like I said, the council was like that and it got to the point where they even got me out of character one night. I even had to apologize because that's not me. So I would like to see you all come together. That fire department is big enough for all of you all and some more. And I appreciate everything you're doing, you know, volunteering. I couldn't do it, but I appreciate you for doing it. So if, you know, I don't know if the council, it's up to them what they're gonna decide. But if Dennis and Gail could get together and just leave all these negative feelings out, just remember we serve one God. All of us are the same. He's gonna love us the same, no matter how you all are feeling. And when you get your personal feelings out of it, trust me, it gets better. Because that's what I had to do. You know, I know they were, up there it was personal feelings, but I let that go aside and remember what we got into this for. For the citizens of Bronson. And that's what you all in it for. You're, you're doing a great service. You're serving and we appreciate it. So don't let one side decide that I'm not gonna serve just because this one's gonna be fire chief and I'm not gonna do it because that one will be fire chief. You know, even if you have to be co-chief and those meetings, if you all would sit down, and they used to have meetings all the time, at least, uh, seemed like once a week. But if you have those meetings and voice your opinion and the one who's in charge, listen. And you all gonna have to realize, the person in charge, they're gonna make hard decisions. They're gonna get upset. Sometime they're gonna yell because that's what, you know, sometime you get to that point where that's what you do. You're in charge, okay, you're not listening. They think if I yell, you're gonna hear me better. But if you have those meetings and everybody voice your opinion and listen to it, don't come say, I'm not going to the meeting because she's gonna be there. But go to those meetings and let them know what you all feel and how you all feel. And see if that'll work out because we need you all. Bronson needs you. That fire department needs you. We don't need this half of you and the other half of you. Work with these young guys, you know, if they're willing to do it. I can tell you all are more experienced, but work with these young people and get them. Because one day you're gonna get old like me, you ain't gonna be able to climb the ladder and get, even get in the truck. So, and I see you all got a lot to teach, some of them. I, I can listen at you and tell you, you know a lot. You can, and you can teach some, you may even can teach Dennis, you may even can teach Gail. But do that and have a meeting and come together. Because this really saddens me to put 20 some years in the council and then have the fire department to just go straight. That's not right. It's not right. Y'all do it. If you don't do it for yourself, do it for me and our community. Listen at each other. That's what you gotta do. Everybody can't just get in there and talk at one time because I see all the blame. Everybody just blaming each other. And, and it, you know, we did that, I did that when I was young, but you know, I, I grew up and I learned Wilson. So listen at each other, please. I'm sorry, I'm about two minutes up.
Like what she, she had said, I'm not here for the money. I was actually going to volunteer. I don't want to pitch up. I, when I was working here at the old station before stuff went down with me, yes, I wasn't paid. I didn't really want to. I came from Wilson. I responded as a volunteer in my own car to here for vehicle crashes and everything because Bronson needed help. We only had six guys that responded to a call. On a structured fire, six guys, it's not enough. Especially out in your 97 to 100 degrees weather in here. It's, they know, I go out west to fight wildfires. It's a different world. But out of the 16 years, when I worked at Wilson, I loved coming over here. I love working with people. That, that's my majority. That's where I want, I wanted to come back because I took some time away and did a lot of things. And I regret. I'll take that back. I do regret. But I was on my downs, like she said, evil got to me. It, it does. It's like you can't fight a devil. You can, you can go to church, you can preach about it, but you cannot fight a devil. I took what I had, everything I took five years probation. I got on early term. Am I happy about it? No, I'm not because I was going through a lot, divorce, everything. Lost my kids at the time. I got full custody of them now. Seven years strong, within it. I, I went through a hole. But this is not about me, this is about this department. Everybody is, like you're saying, separated. I worked with, like I said, with the older crew. When I worked over there on the other side, we didn't really want to come over here and work because there was nobody hardly certified. And everybody was like, looked like chickens out in the field. But when things got older, crew got, came in and tried to take young people out of the way, it's meant something to them. They actually helped train them. But with my training and everything, 16 years, plus with the four shoe side of it, I'll bring it. I'm not asking for a trip.
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother.
I do thank the council for giving us the opportunity to come and speak to this because this, it, it's reached a level that this is where we need to be. And, and your input, I, I don't envy your position right now.
Yes, I, I just want to say I appreciate all you guys for, like B said, for protecting us and protecting the county. But the problem is really no problem. Because I think what I can tell what's going on, so to speak, is, is it's a lack of communication is what it is. It's, and you're not having enough meetings with each other. But, and, and, and then you're not, you got this, this man right here. This man, he, he, he's the guy that you're laying on for the council. He reported us and y'all should report to him. And I don't know whether he needs to start having these meetings, whether they be mandatory and who be there and who don't be there. But it need to be more documentation of our thing. If somebody do something that's not in the policy or, or in the manual or whatever, it should be written up and turned over to Sue and then she'll get with us. So it's, it's, it's things that when things don't go well, you need, you need to come tell somebody, like B said. You don't need to hold it in because you, you need each other. When you get into fire, it, you need each other. Now, when I was in the military, I, I, I didn't, I didn't get mad with the other soldiers because that soldier that I got mad with, I had saved my life. You know what I'm saying? And the same way with the fire department. Same, the fire department, the police department, you can't have anything and click in the department. You got to just, just, just go by what the manual say. And, and, and if you have a problem, go, come to Sue, uh, uh, come to you. The tag was over here, come to you. But you know what I'm saying? I'm, what I'm saying is, is you, you need each other. Your life depends on you. You're, it's too late. It, when we lose a life, it be too late to say, oh, oh, we should have did it better. You do better before you lose a life, you won't lose one. And I thank y'all for being.
I, I do want to say, um, yesterday when I met with, uh, Mr. Russell, this is probably gonna be such a surprise to everybody on this side of the room. But that man did not have one bad word to say about even my little bit. I asked him what was three things, what was three things that he wished he had have done different? One was keep a better line of communication with this dude. There was a particular employee that messed all that communication up. Really, if we could just wash that whole situation? I mean, I hope we can. Because considering who the employee was, we dodged the bullet, it's gone. Both of y'all dodged the bullet, it's gone. They're out of here. No longer in y'all's way. But that was the first thing he said. He said he wished he had have had a more open line of communication with this dude. He then said that he wished that he had a little bit more training, which he has gone on to do. He's taken more training since then. And the, the biggest thing he said was, he said, no matter what we go through, talking about him and them, we make sure that whoever we're on that call for comes first. He said, if we have a problem at the house, we don't have a problem on that call. That's what he said. That, that really is the definition of a leader. He took responsibility for the, the issues that he felt like he was guilty of. And he's implemented some changes going forward. He didn't even tell me that you did any of that in the fire truck. He showed me the fire truck. He refused to tell me who did it.
I'll be the first to own up to my mistakes.
I'm saying, but that's a leader. He's taking all y'all's responsibility. That's a leader.
In our, in our department meetings, it seems like we're thrown under the boss.
I understand that, but if he's throwing you under the bus at your meeting and he's keeping his mouth shut here, he is protecting you.
It creates bad blood between the members, though, that's the thing.
I think some of y'all have to realize that there is a ranking in the fire department and it's there for a reason. Know it might not be perfect, but through communication, it can get perfect. We can get to a perfect place. It's gonna take a lot of communication. And if he cannot handle the liaison side, we need to put in another liaison who has no affiliations with anybody there who can handle it. Because we need y'all. Every one of y'all that's in this room, everyone that showed up tonight, no matter who they are here for, we need y'all. Every one of y'all. And I was really upset with the people that did not make it to the meeting because this was the most important thing on y'all's agenda today. Did not matter who y'all was coming in here for. And if y'all came in here for eat anybody in this room, thank you. Thank you. But we gotta, we gotta come together.
I'll be the first to say, I'm here for this department. Like I said, I don't live here, but, and if I didn't care, I would have walked out and walked back home. This isn't the department that responds to my house. This is not the department that responds to my house, to my family.
Right.
I'm here to make a difference. But like I've stated, it seems like making a difference under the leadership and the way things have been going is very hard. And it's discouraging and we've run into a lot of walls where we want help, but we're not able to. And it's very frustrating for somebody as young and passionate as myself to be able-bodied and certified to help, but held back so many times. It seems to have no merit behind it. And a lot of the issues that have been discussed seem to take a personal connotation to whatever the outcome is. And that's what bothered a lot of members. That's why we're here, because we brought these issues. We didn't just all get here and say, let's go to the council about this. We've all gone to Tyler, I've gone to Tyler and Sue so many times, Mr. Vickers, so have so many other members.
You should be going to Tyler and Sue.
I've gone to that and I didn't, I didn't get through anywhere. And that's the problem, that's why we had to go to other people. Where, that's not how it happened. We, we don't get anywhere because that's the problem. We don't feel like we get a better, we get a bit of an answer, an explanation. We just feel like we're just hashing out. And it's, that's not what we want to do. I'm not here for one person or the other person, I'm here for the department. Like I said, if I don't want to be here, I go back home. This is not my community, but I'm here to help. And that's how so many other people, either it's their community or it's not, but we're all here to help, period, no matter who's in charge. But we're really struggling with the leadership because of us being held back, us being talked down to, discouraged, you know, mistrusted. And we feel like there's no trust between us to delegate duties and stuff like that. And it really affects us. We've put in time, we've put in effort. We've gone to school to become firemen to not get paid.
Let me ask you a question. Are you all willing to sit down?
Are you all willing to sit down, maybe with Sue and Tyler and all the firefighters, and have a meeting, and discuss, you know, because right now, I see, you know, this side don't respect Dennis, that side probably not respecting Gail, and I don't know when the problem came about, because we didn't have this problem, you know, and then Gail came back, and Dennis was out for a while, and then Gail was in his interview. So, but then all of a sudden, all these problems started. So that's what I'm saying, do you think you all can sit down and meet, are you willing to?
Yeah, that's, that's already happened. And this should have been going on since January, since the war, everything.
It's been going on since I was here in 2019.
Yeah, this isn't just a brand-new issue because Gail is back, this has been going on, and people have become so fed up that we're getting outspoken about it, because we're tired and we want a change.
I think that everybody is, is, and I may be speaking out of turn here, but I, I feel like everybody is willing to help make the department better, but there has to be, from this council, a reorganization of what is happening. I don't even know who my direct supervisor is. Right? I, I came back and I started volunteering, I have no idea, I don't know if I report to Lieutenant Kramer, I don't even know if I report to Jesse, I don't know who I report to. That's a problem. I go out on calls, I cover shifts by myself.
Dennis, who does she report to?
She reports, I have to look into who's on the schedule, but the lieutenants that were in, the lieutenants that were in, that are in place, one of them has a contact, and I believe she's under him, which is Brock Smith, he's been out of state for a while. So I know it's not possible.
Either way, these issues have been ongoing since, not just recently, it's just in the past six months, we've become more outspoken, because it's just got to come to the head at some point. We can't keep pretending like the issue's not there. And we've tried to deal with this on our own and not bring up the conflict and everything, but it's, we've gotten nowhere, and that's why we're here.
What is it, Tyler, is that your problem?
Our problem is it.
Hold on.
Oh.
Got one quick question, just saying, I'm going to take this. And you all got SOGs, uh, your SOPs?
I saw them for the first time last week.
You follow, you follow that as a department, right?
And they're ten years old.
That'd be up there.
Thirteen years old, actually.
If you're, if you're going to have officers wearing, like, your lady, I don't know your name, um, Ms. Phillips, somebody to come to. You know, I can understand Chief has a lot on his plate, he has to take care of everything. Captain has a lot on his plate, I've worked in departments like that. But with a female and everything on the fire department, they have to have somebody to come to as well. They can't talk to one of those guys or anything like that.
Sure they'll do.
I'm, I'm just saying, a lot, a lot, a lot of people are different. But I'm, I'm not trying to down on you or anything, I love having women on the department. It's a new age. You know, if I want to go to instructor fire, and she wants to go to instructor fire with me, let's go. You know, I work inside, all the time.
It's hard to have a chain of command to report to when you don't know who you're reporting to.
But it's, it's standard operating procedures and the guy, there's the actual area, and I've seen it, where it says your chief, captain, everything, with your.
Yes, sir. Can we, did anybody that had a scope in the door?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Before y'all make a decision to join the mayor, I want to say this. There's not a person in this room that I have a negative view or attitude against. Issues that I have are issues that people not wanting to listen, tearing up equipment and getting mad, because I get upset because they put a truck in a ditch, or they put it down a road it don't belong on, and they tear them up. Somebody's going to call, somebody's on the schedule, one of the instances that Mr. Mark was talking about, if we don't know you're at the station and somebody's on call, I'm going to question, why did he go to the call and not the person that's on the call? Because I didn't know who was going to the call at first, because it was a different truck. Once he got going to the call, I called the person that was on the call to make sure that he was okay. And then if he was here tonight, that he worked, he could verify that. And whether he was not cussed out, I ain't cussed any of them out. I did cuss, and everybody in here, I don't care who you are, does it.
I know.
I've had people telling me, Miss Sue told me, she says, you can't say this, you can't say that, you can't do this, you can't do that. Okay, it's a, it's a whole new era. So, it's a learning era. So I went through, and, uh, I asked Sue, I says, talk to these people, find out what, what the issues are. Because they're not talking to me, let's find out what the issues are, so we can try to figure out what we need to do to fix it. Myself, Wendy, and Sue was in there, and Wendy said, then we'll find out who your, who your, uh, complainers are. Which is quite a day, I want to know what's going on in the department, I want to know what we got to do, what I got to do, not what we, what I got to do to be a better chief, what I got to do to make their job better, make their job easier. So I asked Sue to sit down with every one of these guys, which she did. We went over the list, her, myself, and Tyler. We addressed a lot of stuff that was on there, and I was disgusted with a lot of stuff that was on there. Not because of what they said, it's because that I allowed it to get to that point. And that point should have never been gotten to. So I've been working on the list, which I've been bringing it up to meetings that unfortunately, some of them have not been at, and we've been trying to address the issues that they have brought to Sue, so we can try to turn the place around. We're not where we need to be. I don't have any ill will against anything that anybody is saying, or they are entitled to what they want to say. But I was told that, in some of this, that I created a toxic environment, that I am a toxic person. Well, everybody needs to take the case, or the class that I took today, because everybody in this room created that toxic issue. It's not just Chief Russell created it, it's not Gail Foot that created it on his own, it wasn't Dustin Mark. It was everybody, because nobody wants to take and communicate. Everybody wants to have their way, do it their way, and that's why we have the policies and procedures replaced. Elizabeth said she didn't send me until the last meeting, that's incorrect, it was actually the meeting before that that I, we got back into the, uh, SOGs and SOPs, because people were saying they didn't get them. Well, I made sure everybody had a copy of them, so we could start going through them. They need updating, they are old. So, I told them last meeting, that we're going to sit down, and we're going to, the whole crew is going to sit down and have a say on what they want to do on these SOPs and SOGs.
What's that, what is that SOP?
SOP is a standard operating procedure. It's, or, I mean, we go SOGs because it's guidelines, because if you do a procedure, then you got to adhere to that procedure. Guidelines give you a guideline, what to go by. And I have a copy of it, if you do it off the scene.
Is this a ten-year-old?
Yeah, they're ten years old, actually, they're older than I know.
It is, uh, as long as you can have handles.
Yes, I made sure we handed them out at the, at two meetings ago, to everybody that was in that meeting. And when they go, when they come on, they get a copy of those. I give them now, I give them a copy of the city one, that Wendy sent me, so I make sure that they have the city, and they have ours, and they have the county's, because the board, the, the council adopted the county's SOGs to go along with it. So you've got three sets of SOGs, so you've got chaos, because nobody knows. Everything that we have in ours counterdicts what they have in theirs. So how can you have three sets and trying to abide by, and then you're contradicting everything from, from each other? There's got to be one set of SOGs or SOPs or policies, either totally across the board, or you got to have one for the fire department, because most counties, cities, they have one for the fire department, because we are a totally different environment than what the city is. Some of the stuff that's in the city's policy procedure is in ours, but there's some stuff that's not in ours. See, when I talked about that, we need to make it uniform in the policies. That way, everything is uniform. So it's, it's, everything's been going on. I took it upon myself to go into doing some, uh, after going over all this stuff, to go in and do some ethic classes, which I think everybody on our department needs to do. The toxic class, it's called toxic employees. Am I guilty of toxic employees after going through that? Yeah, I may be, but so is everybody else on this department, because we don't do the way that we should be doing it. So, I've endured the twenty-five years I've been here. Most of y'all know how I am. This department is, is, is my life. Training new, fresh people to come up, getting the people through the training, getting them what they need, I want that. I've had discussions with some, several of these people on what they thought I could do to be a better chief. Several of them haven't even contacted me back to come sit down with me, to tell me what could I do to make their job better, and what can, what I can do, me, what I can do to make them want to be there more. And some of the ones that complained tonight, and I'm not going to say who they are, haven't even called or come back to see me. They just said what they want to do. So, that's, that's all that I'm going to say. Everything that I do is for the better of the town. You guys hold me accountable for what I'm, for the department. When I screw up, I get my butt chewed, I'm man enough to take it. When they mess up, they should be man enough to take whatever they get. Maybe it's not totally correct way of doing it, but it's a learning process. I've had a lot of communications with Sue, I've learned a lot from Sue. One of the things I said when I first, when she first came here, is that I didn't enter the suit. I have to work with Sue. And I've learned that between the two of us, we can get things done. But I had to learn that she is the liaison for you guys, and it ain't like it used to be when Franklin was the council member over us, or when Jason or whoever was over us. Things have changed. And I've always said, if you can't make change, then you must go hang it up and go out, go somewhere else, because you got to accept it. And I've accepted change, I've accepted responsibility for my actions, and I've done working on going towards things that's going to make my actions better, and that's all I can do. So, that's all I have.
Um, my name is Mark Smith. I'm not from Rockton. I've been in the game, I've been in the game for thirty years. I've been in the fire service since nineteen eighty-nine. I came from a volunteer career combination fire department outside of Washington DC. So in full disclosure, I worked with Gail Foot, uh, with Latro County Fire Rescue. Part of the reason I didn't want to speak tonight, um, I kind of adopted this fire department. I came here because of Gail. Let me tell you a little about my story. I moved, I moved from the Washington DC area and became a fire inspector with Gainesville Fire Rescue, kind of worked at the University of Florida. Then I became the fire marshal for Latro County Fire Rescue. And, um, then I decided it was time for me, after eleven years, I wanted to get back to the next generation, so I started teaching. I teach fire in EMS, I teach fire butter one in EMR at Watton High School in Gainesville. So I decided it was my time to start getting back to the next generation, so I'm kind of a mentor to a lot of people. And my relationship here is, in order for my students to be certified, I have to have a second instructor sign off on their skills. And when Gail was with Latro County, he was training captain, he was my second instructor sign off, so. We just sort of established that relationship, and you've heard the name Ian Gantner before tonight. He was one of the first students that came out here and, I felt like it could benefit both this community and it could benefit my students, um, because they could receive their second instructor sign offs, because I'm only one instructor. And then Rockton could keep a person who's been trained and respond to emergency calls. So that's, and, and since then, I've had four or five other students, and some have gotten hired by other departments, and, um, one is working on coming back. Um, so, that's just a little bit about me and how I got here. I love the fire service, that's what I'm all about, I love serving, I love helping people. But one thing I want to make sure everybody understood is, in the fire department, responsibility is assumed with the position. Responsibility is assumed with the position. Respect is earned, and it's a two-way street. I think everybody can agree with that.
I don't know about that.
What's that?
I don't know about nothing, I can't.
Um, so, a couple of things I wanted to make clear, I've heard some things firsthand since I've been here, I've been here three years. We had a meeting before the storm, I think it was two weeks ago or something, I refer to it as Dennis's Come to Jesus meeting. He came back from his suspension and had a meeting with everybody, and working on communications, and it was a good meeting. Started off, there were a lot of people present, I think Tyler was present as well. I'll just say, I was the one that signed it before, I'm man enough to say I signed, I signed that petition. And I wasn't going to. But during the storm, as a, as somebody who just is naturally a mentor, a lot of the young guys were calling me, and calling me, and calling me. Dennis, at that meeting, gave them permission, if they still comfortable coming in, they could come to me, or anybody else they feel comfortable coming to. And so a lot of them called me, I'm at home, patting down the hatches myself, and, um, and the, the responses and the questions and the concerns just aided me, and aided me, and aided me, and I, I felt like, um, I had to put my name on that, because, you know, for someone not to, to not feel comfortable volunteering their time, that's, that's kind of important. It's, it's never been about how well you serve the community. That's like we said, as a kid, what goes on in-house stays in-house, and then when we respond to the calls, everybody here responds and uses it, that's, that's never been a question. At that meeting, Dennis mentioned that he has an open door policy. It wasn't even a week, and, uh, Destin Mark called me, and he said, I've got an issue with this new, this new, uh, full-time powder butter. On his first day at work, he was blessed as a company officer, he became a lieutenant. And, and they felt kind of...
Is this Jonathan Strong?
It is.
Okay.
And they felt kind of...
Where is he? He's not here?
And, and Destin and some of the other folks that have been here two or three years, and, and really, given that they're all, felt kind of disrespected by that. Because they, they've been here, and they've run the calls, and they've gotten the training, they've gotten certified, and then they were just sort of passed over. And, um, so I told Destin, I said, look, at this Come to Jesus meeting, Dennis said he has an open door policy, go talk to him. And so some of these things have been done, they, they've had meetings, we've had communication, and in that meeting, I remember Destin coming out of the meeting and calling me again and said, as soon as we went and started talking, Jonathan came in, and Jonathan was the topic of conversation. And then the meeting sort of changed, because Jonathan wasn't asked to leave, we're having a discussion. So, I don't know, that's not my idea of an open door policy, but I, I thought it was brave of Destin to go ahead and have that conversation, when he wasn't comfortable for Dennis to start with, so. Two other things that kind of bothered me is, um, for the longest time, we've been doing paper reports and computer reports. And I'm a believer that I do my report, I put my report in the computer, it's my report, I'm responsible for, when I sign my name on it, when I hit enter, it's mine. I don't need anybody else changing my words or anything like that. But then I was told, we're no longer required to put the reports in the computer, we just do the paper report, and someone else is going to do the computer reports, because they need to justify their time. We need to justify... They need to justify that there's stuff that worked for them to do. And that bothered me. And another comment that was made about the squad, there's been some talk about the squad, and I could tell, I think y'all are a little bit confused on what happened with the squad during the storm. This is a truck that's out of service. During the storm, it's put in service and on the cross. It's out of service for a reason, it wasn't fixed, and it's put in service. And I heard firsthand, it was put in service because we're gonna try and blow it up so people can pay for it. That doesn't show no favor to anybody. I'm sorry, that is, but...
That ain't what was said.
That was the words that came out of Dennis's mouth.
I said, "If we're gonna blow up a truck during the storm or tear up a truck, I'd rather be that truck than the brush truck or the other truck."
My point is, it's out of service for a reason, and it's put in service with no repairs. For what reason? We had other trucks for money. We had a brush truck, we had a pickup truck, we could run the engine if the winds were not high, not too hot. So, this is a volunteer department. Like I said at the beginning, I came from a volunteer department, I have two strong volunteer departments. But one of the things that people need to understand is, it's not about the money. The money is a stipend, it, it covers just enough for gas and food. But in order to go to a place and want to be there, you have to have a culture where you want to be there. And when the culture is not fostered, that want, that makes people want to be there, and issues aren't addressed that make people want to be there, the department's not gonna work. And I think that's what everybody's been trying to say, that's where we're at. Something needs to change. I'm not gonna say Dennis shouldn't be chief, or Gail should be chief, or whatever. But something needs to change because I've been trying to do my best to help the department. I've had conversations with Dennis and others in the department, just sharing my experiences and, and my experiences in the fire service, and how we can get to that point. And as of today, it might happen for a little while, but then go right back to the way it was. And that, for me, is the frustration, which is why I decided to sign the petition. I hope that maybe clears up some things, or I can sleep tonight knowing that I spoke my piece. And I'll answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Over 25 years, I've been in the fire service for 45 years, 145 years. Dennis and I have had issues in the past, we've yelled between each other on the fire scenes before, but we got over it. We're not having personal animosity as far as that goes, 14 years like that, just a question of decisions. We've had arguments over that. However, recently, I retired from Latshaw County Fire Rescue, June 2020. And a week later, 1st of July, took over program manager position. A program manager position with Safer now, where we have the team, Safer's staffing, staffing for adequate fire emergency response. The fortunate part about that being in 2020, COVID was gone. So, I wouldn't be able to actively go out and recruit people. A lot of that got, we, he would come to the station, want the applications, and we'd give out other applications. Some of them came back and turned it down. When I started that position, I asked him a number of times, how many of them needs to be done? There had to be quarterly reports, semi reports, annual reports, except the team. Even if we didn't win, they would send us a million more. I'd ask him a number of times, "Show me what you do," he never did, he never responded to me at all. That kind of, that bothered me right from the start. If I'm in that position, I should be able to do the job for that, for free. Then, July 11th, Chief Crosswell was suspended, I suppose you have any information on that? He came back, he's suspended over an August 10th. I went to New York, I left New York on August 15th, and had not heard one word from him in five days prior to that. And that from when I was interim chief for that, for that 30 days. He did not email, text, phone, come see me or anything to find out what's the status of the department. That kind of ate at me a bit. First I heard from him was when I was in the airport in the layover, he sent a text asking me where the phone was and where's the key to the state to the office. Since then, we've had really nothing. Those two things are more personal to me than anything else. This shows that, it also, it also shows the, an issue with leadership. Not, not following through with, for those under, directing under you to find out what's going on, or how things go. A lot of stuff here that was said tonight, I've heard things that were secondhand, so I really, I can't speak to it directly, I've heard it all the people said. I'm sure you have the copy of the petition that came out and the surveys that were sent out, the issues that some other people had, myself included. So, unless you have questions on any of those, I'll just let you make up your own decision on that information. Tonight, it's about, this, this agenda item is about discussion for the fire chiefs. It's up to you guys to make your decision on that. If you have any questions, they'll be there anyway.
Any questions?
I mean, there, there is a point that I would like to drive home, is that in the few meetings that I've attended with you guys, I've heard discussion over background checks, whether or not we should pay for those. Those are $12.15 a person, right? I've heard discussions on whether or not you should have a $1,500 light installed. There is $60,000 or $70,000 that was unaccounted for for grants from our station. That's a huge issue. In my regular job, I manage six multimillion dollar grants. And to give you an idea of what kind of multimillion dollars, in one quarter, we collected $1.6 million worth of permits. One quarter. If I had lost $70,000, I would not have a job.
Do you have a minute?
I lose that one.
Do you want me to speak? Do you want me to speak?
Good.
Okay, so, I'm gonna start by saying that this is not personal. I like Dennis. Dennis has helped myself and Curtis many times with Unified Bronson Day. He, you know, volunteers his time. He helps Curtis put up flags at 5:00 in the morning. This is not about Dennis Russell as a person, this is about Dennis Russell as a leader. Okay, so, let's start by saying, you have before you 14 signatures of 14 firefighters that do not want to work under Dennis's stewardship. Taking away Dennis, Cindy, and Matthew, because those are family, that is 14 out of 17 people. That is 80-something percent of your fire department does not want to work for Dennis Crosswell. That is a huge problem. Okay? Dennis, from day one, when I first met Dennis, on day one, I came over here to the fire department, and Dennis said to me, and I quoted, "I run the fire department you're never gonna have to worry about." That's something on day one. Which of course was a red flag, because when someone says that to you, that means they might have a problem, okay? Again, I like Dennis, but I'm gonna go back to some of the things that, you know, have been a problem with Dennis. The grant is a huge issue, I agree with you. You just heard from Burgess and Gray saying that we are missing $77,000, which was put us in the grant. It's a huge problem. When Dennis came back from his 30-day leave, I said to him, "Your number one thing, number one," I've said it so many times, I've followed up with it probably four times, "is to close that grant." Because I promised my auditor, did it when he closed by August 31st. It is September 18th, it is not closed. I've lied to my auditor, I have a huge problem with that. Okay? In addition to the fact that that grant is for $439,148, we used $114,367. We lost over $300,000 of money that this town could have used to send people to fire to. That is a huge problem. Okay? Again, this is not about Dennis Russell as a person, this is about him as a leader. We have a $1.8 million brand-new fire station, and we are about to get a $350,000 brand-new truck. People should want to work for this department. They should be flocking to this department because of the fact that we in Levy County have the newest stuff. The grants that we got for those, for the two trucks from USDA, I worked entirely with Gail on. Dennis did not work on any of that with me. That was entirely, entirely Gail. Dennis, I always say, because obviously I deal with Dennis and Curtis, Dennis and Curtis are literally polar opposites. Curtis doesn't like to spend $100 without coming to me. He literally will come to me like, "Sue, I really need a change off for something, or I really need whatever for something." And I'm like, "Curtis, you need to go get it." But he literally will not buy anything without asking me. Dennis is just the opposite. Dennis does what he wants. He's on, I always say, he's on an island. He likes to do what he wants, he's on his own. And that is a problem. I know that you guys, the people in the audience, are only hearing about this for the first time, but I literally have been talking to firefighters nonstop for four months. They call me, they text me, they email me, they are in my office. I basically have been running this department for four months. And I have said so many times to Dennis, "If I need to run your department, I don't need you." It's eaten up a lot of my time, a lot of my time. Literally, when I got all of the concerns, were four, five pages, five pages of concerns. I met with Gail and Councilor Jorgez for four hours of one day to discuss all of them. Gail left, Dennis came back, we did the same thing. Then I went with Dennis, and then with Councilor Jorgez again, for four hours of my time. This is eating up my life. I can't stress it enough, how much time I spend on this department. It can't continue. It just can't. We need a change in leadership. We need somebody else who can come in here with a strong leadership ability, strong communication skills, those are the things that are lacking. And Dennis knows this, this is all stuff I've talked about. Nothing I'm saying right now is something I haven't said to him in person, nothing. But the biggest issue on these surveys, which we did this when Dennis was out, which Dennis knew was coming, is I gave all of the firefighters the opportunity to respond to 10 or 12 questions, which I came up with with Wendy and Councilor Jorgez. I never make decisions in a vacuum, ever, ever. And we had three surveys that said it was a toxic and hostile work environment. And I told them, this is something I say all the time about people, if one person has a problem with you, it might be you. If two people have a problem with you, it might be them. If three or more people have a problem with you, it's you. And these are volunteer firefighters. These are people who come in here on their free time, these are not people that work here all the time. Why would you want to come into a fire department with a toxic and hostile work environment? Why? Why? I really...
And why would any females want to work in this department if it's so hostile?
I'm not saying that, and I'm, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that...
She, she just said it, let her go.
I'm not saying that Gail's the answer either, okay? I truly believe that Gail should take over as the interim, and we should post this position and see what we can get. Cast a really broad net. Brand-new fire department, brand-new fire trucks, let's see what's out there. Let's just see what's out there. What's wrong with that? Doesn't everybody want the best for this department? Doesn't everybody in here want the best for this department? Because that's why I care about people in Bronson. That's what I was hired to do, and that's what I care about. I want to make sure that our response time is quick, our ISO is good, you guys are trained properly. If you want to go to fire to, you get to go to fire to. Your equipment fits, you get paid on time. Everybody has a drug test that starts here. We have people right now that went on calls for the last two weeks with no drug screen. Wendy got payroll last week for people that we didn't even have a W-2, for whatever.
I don't even have employment application for.
We hired people, they went on calls, went into people's homes with no payroll. They're driving a hundred and something thousand more truck, don't know if they're on drugs. These are serious problems, again, very, very serious problems. And I'm, I'm not saying that I haven't, Dennis and I have been working together. Councilor Jorgez and I have been working together. We have been trying for four months to find a way to get on the other side of this. This is not, I know, again, the public, this is new, but this is not something that has just happened in a vacuum. This has been going on for quite some time. And I don't think we can solve it by, as much as I love that Dennis is taking ethics training and going, I'm the one who gave him all this stuff to do. I mean, I love it, it's great. It's too little, too late. You have 14 people who signed this petition who do not want to work underneath his leadership.
How come I haven't received a copy of that?
I'll give you a copy.
What are you saying, you're normal? Because there's not 14 people sitting on that side there.
It doesn't mean that they're all here, Dennis, it does not mean that they're all here. They don't have to.
I can say that part of the reason it was from a day what, that there were concerns that there would be retaliation in that department if people were bored. And that has been something that, I work part-time somewhere else, and I've had people come into that restaurant and say, they are scared to speak because of what won't happen if we get through this tonight and you're here tomorrow or somebody else is here tomorrow. They are in fear of their job, they are in fear of volunteering, and they are in fear that they will not be in that department. And that is the God's honest truth.
It seems to be that, since we're talking about leaders, I mean, it shouldn't have never got to this point. If you're the supervisor and you're the leader on, on the council, it seems like when first sign of trouble, y'all should have stepped up and met with everybody and, and tried to get the feeling toned down. It shouldn't have never come to this point. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that. Y'all, y'all, y'all ever met with everybody?
Yes.
I met with every single person on the fire department except for Elizabeth.
I'm telling you that one time.
Not one time. Because people are scared to speak. People will not speak in front of Dennis.
What, they think Dennis don't choose or give them?
No, but they are, I will tell you this, if I, as an employee, and you were, if Sue is my direct supervisor, and I was scared to come to Sue about an issue because she would retaliate for me, then I would come and talk to you, and that is your right as an employee in Florida. And so, you have members of this department that there are issues that could not be taken to Dennis, that were taken to Dennis, and it fell upon deaf ears, I'm not saying that was every single circumstance, but they were scared to speak up in front of Dennis and in front of other members of that department because they were in fear of retaliation.
And there's also been kind of, like Levy County is watching all of this. They are aware of all of this. And their interaction with us on calls has changed. They don't even want us on calls with them.
This was one of my biggest concerns, was that petition there, and Dennis, I just copied it, I didn't see him. Petition to me. So, but I've met with Dennis multiple times, I've met with majority of these firefighters all the time. I don't think I've ever talked to one other Elizabeth. Over the weekend, I think I talked with every single one of them in here, except Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, Elizabeth, met with Dennis and Cindy Saturday, and then Matthew and Amber. Those are the only ones I had not spoken, spoke to over the weekend. I met with every single person on this department. And trying to cover my bases to make a decision for this, I've had conversations with people outside the department within the county. I've talked to battalion chiefs, I have talked to director of public safety, I have talked to various other people. I have talked to various other people. And I've got the same gist from it all. I don't know, I don't know that there's too many burnt bridges to come back from. I don't, I don't know.
For one, I think we need to implement no relationship from two people on the same shift in the firehouse. I think that needs to be the first thing to do. If there's a relationship in the firehouse, they cannot work the same shift.
I agree with that.
There should not be. There should, as a chief, as a deputy, if you hold a position of power, you are not allowed to date somebody underneath you. That is a rule in any job.
Not in the firehouse.
We married each other.
And not other, oh, firehouse.
I will tell you that it creates issues. You go to any department, you go to Chan, you go to numerous places. Ninety percent of your places, a chief, anybody with a position of power cannot date somebody. You will get kicked out of the military for that.
A lot of firefighters and EMTs are there. I mean, I...
But your chief will not be directly, you should not be a direct supervisor, exactly.
But they're usually not either at the same station or on the same shift.
And you're right, it creates...
I'm not a direct supervisor, Cindy, she is under Robert Kramer. Robert Kramer is your direct supervisor.
It creates issues in your department. It creates issues in that department.
All right, last call. Anybody ask this one?
Well, I'll say this. Go back to the state. I worked in the state 23 years. And there was no policy there. I based on my...
I can show you the policy right now.
You just need to get caught.
There's a policy for the city of Raleigh.
All right.
Can I be the supervisor?
Two, you do the version. All right.
Any other council members have anything?
That's what I'm doing, I'm doing it. We're trying to hear.
Well, let me re-again a couple more thoughts, so y'all go ahead.
I just think that there's a bridge up the spank that has been burned, singed, nuclear power torn down, and unless we make some kind of change, the, I mean, it's not gonna happen. So, I kind of agree with Sue that we open it up and Dennis want to apply and just start over. Because we have to get somebody in that, one, the people there are gonna respect and work for, but two, understand that we make the change from that point forward, whoever it is. It is what it is, this is your responsibility, this is the job, this is the policy, that's what we do. And that would be my suggestion. But I think to lead things as is, is that we're just waiting on the bomb to go off, basically. And that's my opinion.
That's my biggest fear is if this petition, whatever you want to call it, a piece of paper was signed with me on it. All 14 of them get up and say I'm done, even though some of them that signed it may have not been the most active in the past year. Where does that leave us?
All right, Mr. Jay, you got anything to say?
I moved to open the position of chief to see what we can get without firing Dennis.
All right, I need to hear the other side.
What does that mean? Lower that put Dennis in a position?
To get rid of.
You can't do that for me.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I think that we need to have better communications because I didn't find out nothing was wrong with the fire department since two weeks ago, maybe. That probably puts you there. Two weeks, did you know something wrong with the fire department? And you came here the same day. We got one in the same day. But that's not right either. I mean, you can't stop something if you don't even know about it. I mean, it still got to be better communication. It should be more hands-on from the council, from Tyler, from Sue, or who else. But it should be more hands-on, and we already have a good structure. Dennis been here, how long has he been?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. And, but I know Dennis, he's always did the right thing. He went in on fire chief when I first came here. He was a regular fireman. And he's worked his way up to way up. And then we haven't heard all this bickering until now.
Oh, no.
I mean, what did that take you? That, there was nothing wrong for years, now everything is wrong. We can't work with, we top it, he this, he that, he that. Some of that just gets plain old school. You know what I'm saying? Y'all need to be, if you're grown, you need to act grown. You need to get together, like I'm telling you, you need to be brothers. There need to be a brotherhood in the fire department because somebody will get killed if you're not. I mean, you need to be together to keep people from getting injured or hurt or whatever. But, I mean, it's the same. I don't see nothing that, I mean, Dennis, if he did wrong, he's been suspended by some. I don't, I just don't get it. I don't get it. I mean, it's like, it shouldn't be no cliques in no fire department, like I said from early, because you all got to depend on each other. And so, I don't see why it won't work with Dennis. If you get more communication, you have meetings, and if you come to the meeting, and if you get mad because somebody gave you a write-up or whatever, I mean, that's not no reason to change nobody because you don't like them or whatever. I mean, overall, I, but I know Dennis had did a good job. But I know. Now, it might be some stuff I don't know, like I say, I didn't even know what a problem in the fire department just two weeks ago. And I've been here since May.
Well, I did. Fifty-five thousand of that is still pending. And we've been trying, I finally got a phone call back today on that. You were thinking we could have been worse.
Okay. Got her.
No, I'm not.
This can't happen anywhere. You can't have this many people that don't want to work for somebody, no matter what the reason is. I mean, if it's like, like what Miss Sue said, if it's one person, it might be them. If it's two people, maybe them. If it's three or more, something's, something's there that's not working. From all I've had, I can't tell you how many text messages, phone calls, emails, meetings in the past two, three, four months concerning this fire department with people outside of the department, people inside the department, just me and Sue, just me, Sue, Wendy. Everybody that's knows something, knows more than me, trying to get some kind of insight in this, I'm 24 years old. You've been doing this job longer than I've been alive. So, I was trying to get my knowledge up on people who've worked with people in the past, who work with them now, who's worked in the last five years, who worked with them 20 years ago. And it was all kind of the same gist of stuff may change, stuff may not, stuff that's happened in the past that has never changed. So, but this is the most disconcerting thing of all of the surveys, of the five pages of stuff that Sue had written down. This is it. I mean, if we have 14 people say, "We're done tomorrow." Proxifier is no more, there's nobody to respond. Then what does the county do to us? Okay, we're gonna take your $300,000 a year we gave you back after we just signed up the $50,000 truck payments. We can't do that. And I have not, personally, I have nothing against Dennis. I've had, well, I'd say I've had interactions with him outside of being on the council. I think he's responded to a fire at my house a couple times with my crazy stepdad. But I don't know, I don't think, I don't know if there is a coming back from this point without a change. And I've, for the past four days, I have thought of what I was gonna say. I have changed my mind 43 times. But it all, every time I talk to somebody new, it just keeps coming back to like, okay, maybe this change doesn't even happen to improve something, get a fresh start. Even if it's with Gail's interim and then we get somebody else as chief that comes in and says, "Hey, I can turn this around." That's, that's my opinion, that's where I'm at right now in this one.
You know, my problem with you is that you didn't, you didn't, you knew all of this four months ago, you never said nothing to the council. The mayor had asked you, you got anything to say about the fire department? You never said a word, nobody never said a word. Like I say, I didn't even know it was a problem until two weeks ago. I mean, that shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be like that either. I should know as a council member, I should know what was going on in the fire department. And you should have been the one that would tell them. But you didn't tell them, you didn't say nothing.
Four months ago, you didn't like me to say, okay. Well, two days ago, I didn't take the trash out.
That's all you would have had to say? We got a problem in the fire department, maybe we could have stopped it before it got here. But you ain't say nothing. You were just, nothing. Forget it.
Well, I mean, that, what you're saying is, it makes sense.
Right, you should have been saying something.
Because it might not have been bad.
I can't lay this on...
I'm not laying on that, no, that's not his situation. But he owned the fire department though.
I understand that, there's so much out here that you have to hold yourself and stuff you're trying to push out, Mr. Kinnon. And I appreciate him doing the job he dare do. Because it takes a lot of time, just like he said, he's been there for a month. And that's a must-be able to meet with.
I'm just trying to stay in peace.
Yes, and there you go. And there's a time when you, sitting behind this desk here, you know, I don't want to be here tonight. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I didn't want to be here tonight to listen to this, okay? Because I want my fire department to be running smoothly with no problems. But there is clear to my, attest to y'all, that we definitely got a problem. Okay? And it can, you know, like you say, you cannot continue to be doing the same thing over and over and over again expecting it's a better change, okay? You cannot continue to do so. Todd, I respect your job, and I appreciate what y'all are doing and everybody else on the situation. Now, we got a task to do, okay? So, does anybody else got anything else to say tonight about, before I can do this?
I better say something, the only one I have, and I'm a partner. My name's Parker, I'm located. I think that, you know, we have a lot of people here saying, "I haven't worked out, I haven't done this and that." The problem is, like Todd said, and other people have said, it's too hard on them. Either there's a, either we make Dennis the chief, and he's full-time chief, and everybody respects that. But the problem is, I think a lot of the guys have quit tonight. I moved here from Gainesville...
Raise your hand if you're gonna quit tonight.
I moved, I'm talking, and we can listen to me for a minute. Six years ago, I moved to Bronson because I lived in Gainesville all my life. I have a job in Gainesville, my whole family's in Gainesville. And I moved to Bronson because I want to be a part of this park, in this community. I've dedicated my life to it. I work, we listen, all of us listen to the paper and radio 24/7. We can come, we come. Something has to change, and it either needs to be by you all to say, "We need help." As in counselor, I don't know, but war needs to change. And I don't know that you can fix what we've got right now.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, sir. I'd like to know, I need to remember names on that list that's still in the fire department. But I see one name on there that's not in the fire department right now. Name is Jerry Ward.
He's in the fire. He's at FC Dice as a member. Yes, he is. Look at FC Dice, he's in there.
I'd like to point out that part of the reason why you're not seeing this issue before now is it's kind of always been an issue, but people just leave, right? People just walk away from the station. That this is, what you've got here is a group of people who are dedicated to this station enough to come... You know, I spent eight hours at work doing budget meetings. I have been eight hours of budget meetings today. And I still came here after all of that and giving up my time again to be here, right? You've got a group of people who are so dedicated that they are willing to say something now. That hasn't happened in the past. People would just leave.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing, I've got one question for Public Works. That camera working tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll tell you and get that recorded.
It'll be on YouTube, as they all have been for the last several months. I should have warned them about it.
Would that be a fit?
Well, Sue said put him in as interim, but Dennis said, "No, don't try it, Dennis." So, you neuter him with the council. I'm like, what's his name over there? Mr. Smith?
Not me.
He, when he got there, he talked with horses than anybody I've heard. And he seemed to be more level-headed, more experienced. So, maybe he can do the interim until you can find you.
If you have a talent that I didn't mention before.
We see tonight you're gonna fire, you know, get rid of Dennis. But do you have the fire gang? Did he work somewhere in the fire department? You know, because he's looking at his life.
That should be determined. All right, Gail, you have something to say?
I would just say, it's in the paperwork that's there that myself and some others, and others of us here have heard from our contemporaries and other colleagues and other members in the, in other departments and in the community, that they do not want to come here because Dennis Russell is fire chief. Not just a chief, he's a member here. They do not like him. That's a personal thing on them. They don't want to come here, and that's, that's a potential, a number of potential people that we could have as members. If Phillips asks who will be here, I can tell you right now, I will not be here if he's here. Because I don't want to go through that. I don't want to be here if there's so many people that will come that will not come.
Even if he's here as an employee and not a...
Yes. Because it's not, it's not what he's done the past three years. It's what's happened in the past 20 years, everybody knows, and they do not want to come here.
Let me say, can I say something? Yeah, I think we setting up a precedent that when...
I think we setting up a precedent that when, no matter who come, they find out that we move based on the petition of the employees. We gonna have issue because when somebody new come in, they gonna come in, whoever it is, they gonna come in knowing what has happened, and everybody gotta be ready to change. Because if I was coming in and I knew the situation I was coming into, I might not trust nobody. Everybody gonna be treated the same, and you gonna have to earn what you get. And if you're not willing to earn what you get, then you're not gonna be here. I would, I would ask you not to come. And whoever come, they look and they meet everybody, and they may be like, "I don't choose, you, 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 don't come back." As a council in the city, are we gonna be, because here we be in the same situation where we may not have anybody. But directly, there's some issues, and I'm not saying really, but as a council moving forward, as a city moving forward, we have some issues, and somebody that's stern, now this young generation, you can't, you can't supervise them. I got, me, me and Mickey are old men, but I got some young ones that, the, the workforce and the young people, the young generation, you can't, you know, they have diff, they have difference. They, they're educated, they wanna know, they wanna learn, they wanna be able to do what they went to school for, whatever task they've done, they wanna be able to exercise. And they not used to be in, in a position where you say, "Wait." But when you get somebody in here that, I guarantee you, I like the way he spoke, but I guarantee you from him listening at what's going on, it'll be a tough situation for him to come in. And Ken, he's a mentor, but it's some people you can't mentor, right?
They got to go if they, they can't get on board.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and that just, that just goes with everybody, though. That goes with any department. You hire somebody, you could work McDonald's. You know, if you got an employee that's not working, they gotta go. You know, it takes one bad apple.
All right. I'll say implement drug testing. We are trying a lot.
Is it already a city policy? Is it already?
That what, that what?
That you are drug tested before you are employed. No, you are, you are, you are drug tested, you are, you are supposed to be drug tested before your first day of work.
Right. Right, you can't be drug tested without.
No, yes, they can, if you have suspicion of certain type of behavior and need to be shown.
Oh, I see. Okay. I don't know. It's in there.
I have to go.
How are we gonna fire someone?
Okay. What is the point of this? That is the. Maintain.
Trying to find my words.
Based my motion off this vote of no confidence is what I'm gonna call it.
You did what, man?
I'm gonna base my motion off this vote of no confidence is what I'm gonna call this, Mr. Baker.
So he's, he's gonna make a motion based off of what he feels is a vote of no confidence, as we say.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we cancel the appointment of fire chief with a thirty-day written notice. But I think that's what the contract is, is written notice, right?
No, that's not necessary, but there's nothing wrong with doing that.
So we will continue, we will pay the remainder of.
This contract?
This thirty-day, or end of the contract, which is like the end of this month. We can affect it immediately. Point Mr. Foot as interim chief, and we will advertise the position of fire chief. Exterm.
Where's the first fire meeting after this?
First fire meeting after this?
Yep. First meeting next morning. Can, uh, we, can we say?
You can go, I can't. If you go, if you wanna go, I won't go.
We need to say what?
I guess you have.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the personnel policies for the Bronson volunteer fire rescue adopted March first, two thousand and ten. The very last thing in the book says, "Discipline of the fire chief. The board shall have the sole discretion, the board meeting the council, with respect to the timing, method, and manner of discipline of the fire chief." So you have the discretion under these rules to do whatever you want with fire chief. Uh, one of the things that you might at least consider to, since you deferred the actual termination for thirty days, is affording him the right to come before the council with any additional evidence by way of the field to attempt to persuade the council to change its mind. I'm not suggesting that you should, but, but I think it, it's a right of appeal. It doesn't really call for a right of appeal in this particular set of policies, but the overall personnel policies, which probably do not apply because the specific always takes precedence over the general, and you have specific policies for the fire department. Be that as it may, uh, to, to be as, as actu medical as we can about the whole thing. Uh, that might consider giving him the right to appeal within thirty days with any additional evidence or material he would like to present in his own defense or script. I'm suggesting you might wanna make that part of the motion.
I'd like to make the option to appeal in thirty days. We can still, we'll call special council meeting. Well, I made sure it was part of my motion.
He would have to file the appeal, he'd write it within thirty days. Wouldn't necessarily have to, here.
Okay, okay.
Which I have to know when he's filing.
Okay, I have a motion on this one. Do I use?
Can I?
Wait, I gotta get a second.
Say it. What you want us to do?
I make a motion that we will cancel, terminate, whatever word you wanna use, the appointment of current fire chief, thirty-day notice. Gail will be appointed interim chief effective immediately. Dennis will still get payment for the rest of the contract, which is the end of this month. Thirty, thirty days, correct?
So September, he'll get paid for the contract.
If he's on a pay-to-fight team.
Pay for, can the rest of his contract?
Pay-to-fight.
Yes, one more, that's on you.
And with the option to appeal in the thirty-day.
So are we gonna advertise within those thirty days or we waiting until after?
Yeah, we're gonna advertise, I mean, however, suing them, handle that. Yeah, immediately, they can put it on the D tomorrow. Where can they post it?
You're not gonna wait until he appeal? Does he have appeal?
Uh, we can always, we can, we can advertise, and she can always just deny the asset.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I hear a second? I have a motion, and with a second. Do I have any questions about this? Do you have a question?
I just have a question. So if the contract is terminated, is Dennis still part of the department, or is he no longer part of the department? Is he on leave, basically?
That was the terminology, yes, as Sue suggested. So whatever his status was last time he was suspended, that is his status again for the thirty days. Which I presume is, yes, when he's, he's on.
Okay.
Love it.
Could I, could I also suggest that Sue share her notes with all of the, the council? Uh, because there's definitely things in her notes that I do not feel comfortable sharing.
What, the five meters?
Yeah.
We got it already.
Okay.
Yes, I've read it a hundred times. All right. Yes, sir.
Sir, I will go for state president with the worst of the worst inmates. I come to work every day and go and smell that attitude and throw up and everything else. Sometimes when I walk in the station after some of these gentlemen meet, I smell that bad attitude. Some of these remind me of the inmates that we have behind those cell doors, of how they grow tenderness or they don't get their way, they get mad or upset. It's just.
All right. And guys will be in thirty days, so you might as well go, if you're gonna terminate, just terminate. And instead of waiting thirty days, you can have time to sell. If you build a lot of attitude, you can definitely, you can't have it. Uh, okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Do I need to do a roll call for this?
I think you should.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Tom?
I know.
Right here?
Me.
Myself? Uh? Jim?
No. Ma?
Three, two.
This is third.
I should tell you.
Can I make a motion that no, um, relationships in the firehouse on the same shift?
Well, there's already, it's already a policy.
It's because it was allowed, it's already a policy.
So city policy, not, 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 I go back to the government policy.
Bronson Fire Department policy and regulations and procedures state, at the time of employment as a volunteer with Bronson Fire Rescue, you are considered a part-time City of Bronson employee. So therefore, you fall under the City of Bronson's employee manual.
And you need to change all the names because you can't have two policies when you're counter-gifting the policies.
Can I ask one question? So when I advertise this position, are we advertising this as a fire one or a fire two?
Fire two minimum.
You better.
Don't we have a qualification for a chief?
Volunteer fire chiefs are not required to have the same training as fire two. Fire chiefs, fire chiefs should come in here, they're required other training, they're gonna pay out, and we need to make some warrants. What's that?
Do you want a fire one or a fire two?
I'm sure it'll be on the desk tomorrow. Was that?
No, it's not. Let's not do that.
Fire two. Fire two.
Gail, explain the difference, Gail, please explain the difference between fire one and fire two.
Fire fire one is, is two hundred hours of training. Two fire fire one, the minimum part to be a volunteer to be able to go to a fire and fight fire. There can be volunteers, support members, who can have, give a training, but in order to be able to fight fire, you have to be a fire, a fire fire one. A fire fire two has an extra two hundred hours of training, and that is the minimum part to be a paid firefighter in state. So there's, there's some difference. The main difference is just deployment, basically. And, uh, the FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act, they, they set parameters for volunteers. It's something that we're talking about pay and stuff like that, we would pay, volunteer firefighters in this type of, they cannot be paid for activity. So we would give a stipend to individuals, and if they only be, and the stipend that they get, it'll be twenty percent of what a paid firefighter would get. That's why we kept the chiefs out at sixteen thousand, right? That was twenty percent of the average, uh, full-time. Eight thousand. It's the national average for fire chief.
I mean, you could do, because it is hard to find, it may be hard to find a fire two that would be a volunteer chief, I'm saying it's possible. But you could say, prefer fire two, fire ways, I think would.
You can also put, there are other, there are other stipulations within.
Officer training.
Officer training, because fire officer one, fire officer two. Fire officer one has four, forty-five hour classes, and fire fighter, or fire officer two has an extra four forty-five hour classes. So you could, you could say that fire one, firefight one with fire officer one certification, or at least a class of, not the certification.
I want to think that if you're gonna be a supervisor, you're gonna be supervising people, you should have more than, pay time. Got to be some officers, some kind of leadership, officer type.
Fire one with a minimum of officer one, that's sufficient. And we can, we can always make it. Or you can order the two, two of the class. Two of the classes, one is company officer, and one is tech, it's a strategy which is dealing with the actual fire, doesn't know how to tell you, correct, other's not a fire department. The other two classes in there are private fire protection and ability construction. We're gonna have, but as far as being a leader, company officer and tech strategy should be the most, the least considered. We can get Gail to sit down with Sue and speak tomorrow. The older classes and the. Experience wasn't very good, so I'm not.
Can you send it to the rest of us before it's posted, so if we have, I think we wanna add to it, right?
Elizabeth, what'd you say?
Sorry, I just, uh, when talking about the fire chief, I think that there is so much more than just certifications, right? The fire chief does the budget, the fire chief does community interactions, right? The certifications are important, but Dennis and Cindy kind of work as like a team, where Cindy did all of our administrative work, right? And that's what I meant when it said, it kind of feels like mommy and daddy are running the station, right? So there, there needs to be something in the job description that says, yes, you're a firefighter, yes, you're gonna be managing firefighters, but these are also the things that the council expects of you.
And a lot of that stuff you can find on the resume. You can get, you can get a lot of that stuff on our resume, a well-written resume with experience. We'll show you that level of experience, that leadership.
We, we've already done it, we just have not given it.
All right, uh. What do we want?
Yes, uh, there is a new act that takes effect October one regarding the passage of ordinances, and it's something that you need to be aware of. What basically says is that if a municipality or a county that operates, a registered municipality, adopts an ordinance, whether it's arbitrary or unreasonable, and somebody challenges it in court successfully, they can get attorney's fees up to fifty thousand dollars. Now, what they have the right to do, or what they are required to do if they want to challenge it, is when you first adopt this, before you actually adopt the ordinance, it's give you a notice that they feel that the ordinance is arbitrary and unreasonable. And then you have thirty days within which to withdraw it if you feel that they're right, and you may be exposing yourself to lawsuit and fifty thousand dollars attorney's fee, which believe me, when those lawsuits are brought, all the attorney's fees will come up to fifty thousand dollars. It's, it's a terrible, in my personal opinion, it's a terrible thing, because what's arbitrary and unreasonable? It's in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, discretion by.
The existing law said that if you adopt, all of this applies, if you adopt an ordinance that violates the state preemption. So that if, if, if the town of, of Bronson decided to adopt an ordinance changing the speed limit on I seventy-five, you know, something relatively crazy like that, but with anybody can claim that ordinance is arbitrary or unreasonable. And you don't know until some judge decides it, whether it is or it isn't. So it, it's gonna create problems. The second part of it, and I know you've heard a lot of it, so I'm going to be brief, is, uh, is something else. And that is, with every ordinance that you adopt, that has an effect on local business, again, very vague, because everything indirectly at least has an effect on local business. So it's gonna be, have to be fleshed out later on, but anything that has an effect on local business, you have to accompany the adoption of it with an analysis of how it will affect the local business, uh, what the financials will be, how much it will cost versus how much it will bring in, if it's taxing or fees or anything like. how much it will cost versus how much it will bring in, if it's taxing or fees or anything like that. It's called a business impact estimate. Doesn't have to be done by an accountant, but it has to be done in your face. And again, it's just, it's an invitation to litigation, but we're gonna have to deal with it. This applies to every ordinance adopted from October one, full.
What's the name of the act?
I think it's.
Right?
Uh, what do they call, an act relating to local ordinances, and I haven't seen to have a, some duty, a name yet, but I've seen.
It's gonna be called the fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah, it's twelve lawyer enrichment.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty much.
No, it's, it's really, it's, it's troublesome, because you've got a sword of damnation hanging over your head every time you adopt a local ordinance, and, but, uh, yeah, the law's the law. Anyway, that, that's my report.
Okay. Uh. Committee reports? Uh. I'm gonna pass. Jim?
Thank you so much for the, for the line on the corner of Main Street on twenty-four.
We've done it yet.
I can see it already, I can believe it, I can see it, thank God so much, for, for yesterday, okay, that's it, man.
Tyler, you talking to them?
Yeah, Fire Prevention Week's coming, I will say that, we're still gonna do that.
Okay.
When is that?
Middle of October, like.
First, first full week of October. The week that October ninth is on.
Are they gonna do some at the school?
Yeah, we got, we're doing, um, elementary school, pre-k through third.
It's Friday afternoon, we got more than one school. You have another school, you said.
Yeah, pre-k through third grade, where they stop that. They've always stopped that.
If you need any of that, you can just, I can provide.
And then they do the head start. And then. That's where they've always stopped that, that was what I was doing. You told the contract.
Alright. Anybody else got anything to say from public, this person?
I would just like to thank all of you again for hearing us, and, uh, again, I don't think your position's but not an easy decision to come to.
Alright, so Keith, uh. Did we have a chance to review the bills?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer a question too, uh, what do we, uh? Hugh Concrete.
Hugh Concrete, that was when.
That was their trail circle. Um, we had a water line busting, and we hired Hugh Concrete to come, we do the, uh, the driveway.
Okay.
Have your pleasure, Tyler.
We didn't have to bid that out of us, we just.
I got folks, I got folks, and he was the cheapest.
Okay.
Well, when was, when was the concrete done, like a long time ago?
I mean, it's been a while.
She had to ask.
Two more weeks from now.
It wasn't. I remember it was a Saturday, cause I got off of work.
About two months ago, two, two months ago.
And we got the bill, I think, last month?
Yeah.
Alright, no more questions about the bills? I will enter the motion.
Make the motion to pay bills.
I can move a second, pay the bills, all those papers, it's a process, see, now. James, anything you wish to hear?